Please.
I just got a text from Councilmember Abadamas. She's looking for her link to log in. I don't know if Teresa, if you can help out on that front?
Yes, I just sent her one. Sorry, I didn't realize I was on mute. I was responding. So I sent her the link and wonder what's going on with the links? Really unusual.
Thanks, Ross.
Recording in progress.
Yes, I'm going to see Councilmember Oros down this way. There he is. Very good. Okay, Council is present. I'll call the meeting's word. We're going to say council meeting, or number 2016, 2021. You have the flag, please, with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join me in the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Meeting announcement. For someone who government to AB 361, this meeting will be held entirely virtually. All material available for public participation are detailed on the front page of the agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas? Is she here? What happened to her? Are you looking at attendees? I moved her up and then she was there. Nope, all right, I'm putting her back.
Councilmember Abadamas, would you join us? They're showing up on my screen.
Councilmember Abadamas, you're on mute? Oh, she's still connecting.
Okay.
Councilmember Abadamas, you're on mute?
Sorry, for some reason, my audio is not working, so I'm on my phone and on video.
Okay, we hear you.
We hear you now, good.
We were just doing roll call. So.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, great. Abadamas is here and Councilmember Oro?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Here.
And Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to report on closed session confirmation of reportable actions. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, your council convened an open session at 5:01 PM to address the matters agendized for closed session consideration. After ascertaining there were no public comments concerning those matters, you adjourned to closed session 5:01. You concluded closed session at 6:35 PM with respect to the matters agendized for closed session consideration. And will do a written report upon return from closed session consistent with the provisions, Government Code Section 5497.1. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on now with our agenda. Proclamation to presentation. I have three. The climate change proclamation. It has been great pleasure this evening to read the spot. See the American Canyon proclamation, climate change urgency. Whereas there is an odd scientific consensus that climate change caused by human activity represents a growing danger to human health and economic prosperity and the window of opportunity for long-term climate preservation disruption closing. Whereas 195 countries signed the Paris Agreement acknowledging the threat of climate change and urgent need to combat it, agreeing to keep global warming temperatures well below two degrees Celsius for a retreat of the levels and to pursue efforts to limit temperature increase to 1.5 degrees Celsius. And whereas the 2018 Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, report global warming of 1.5 degrees Celsius affirmed that limiting global warming to 5.5 Celsius would require rapid far-reaching and unprecedented changes in all aspects of society. And further projected, the Earth could reach and exceed these temperatures thresholds as soon as 2030, far earlier than previously anticipated. And whereas the 2018 US government report, Fourth National Climate Assessment, detailed massive threats to the American economy posed by climate change and underscored the need for immediate climate emergency action at all levels of government. And whereas California, Napa County and their residents, economy and environment have already experienced dramatic adverse effects from climate change, including prolonged wildfire seasons, firestorms, rising temperatures, mudslides, severe droughts, property destruction, damage to infrastructure and loss of life. And whereas climate breakdown from endangering all people disproportionately impacts young and older residents and the most vulnerable, exacerbating existing social justice and other inequities. And whereas today's children represent a particularly vulnerable group because increasing greenhouse gases and trapped heat will almost certainly have a profound negative impact throughout their lives, as well as the lives of future generations. And whereas on June 18, 2019, the city council issued a proclamation to join with Napa County jurisdictions dedicated to working together with community organization, businesses, schools and regional partners and jurisdictions to educate, mobilize, expand and accelerate local, regional and state immediate and sustained action. And whereas, as used above, the term climate emergency does not refer to an emergency, a local emergency or state of emergency as defined American Canyon Miss Code, Chapter 2.48, Civil Defense and Disaster Relief, Article 1, Organization of City for Emergency Response. And the city council does not confer any emergency powers to the city manager, director of emergency services, as it relates to this proclamation. Now therefore, being proclaimed that the city council, the city of American Canyon hereby recognizes as follows. That a climate emergency exists and that it threatens our city, state, county and world. That the city of American Canyon joins a growing list of communities committed to a goal of net zero climate pollution nation in terms of net contribution to excess trapped heat by or before 2030. And further commands to evaluate all planning and policy decisions through the lens of this pledge and to implement both immediate and sustained actions in support of its achievement. That the American Canyon City Council recognizes the need for full community participation and support towards providing leadership and services in working with community organization, businesses, schools and regional partners and jurisdictions to educate, mobilize, expand and accelerate local, regional and statewide support for comprehensive, immediate and sustained action to achieve this goal of net zero climate pollution by or before 2030. That the city of American Canyon will, at the earliest opportunity, amend the city's general plan to prioritize climate goals and practices to support the provisions here. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor? I don't know if, well, normally there wouldn't be a lot of discussion on an item like this, but I would like to propose or make a motion now or at the end of the evening that we come back and convert this proclamation to a resolution consistent with the action the city council took on September 21st, when it voted unanimously to come back with a resolution. And that that resolution should be further modified to delete the fourth section talking about a general plan amendment and in its place indicate that the council establishes an ad hoc committee working with staff and local stakeholders to develop an implementation plan to achieve the goals set forth above. And I make this because I think it's consistent with the council's direction from a month ago, as well as I think a proclamation by its nature is not an action document. It is essentially a declaration of intent, and I think we did that two years ago. A resolution is needed and a resolution that includes an implementation plan is the only way to basically define, I mean, it's an ambitious goal to be net zero by 2030. We have to at least identify specific actions and milestones in order to get there, so.
Mr. Joseph, I think that's about it. We can take up our future as an item.
Okay, I will bring it back up at the end of the council meeting, but I, thank you.
Your point's well taken. Yes. Okay. Moving on, we have a presentation for housing in Napa Valley.
And moving over, Pablo from Fair Housing Napa Valley. And Brent Cooper, in case he needs to answer any questions for you or making work that. Here we go.
Again, good evening, welcome. Good to have you here with us. You're beautiful, sir.
Thank you, Garcia. Good evening. Good evening, city council members, Vice Mayor Joseph, city staff. Great to see you all. My name is Pablo Zadaran, Executive Director at Fair Housing Napa Valley, and I'm very pleased to share an update with you all regarding our work throughout the county and specific to American Canyon as well. So without any further ado, I will start to share my screen and please let me know if you. Can everybody see this?
Yes, I can see it. Yep. Okay.
All right.
Continue.
Thank you. So I just want to start with some brief information regarding our agency. I know that we give this update on a yearly basis, but for anyone who may not be aware of who we are and where our agency does, we're a private nonprofit that assists residents in both Napa County and the city of Balaio with a broad range of comprehensive counseling, educational enforcement, intake investigative and referral services, primarily in the areas of fair housing and tenant landlord disputes. Tenant landlord disputes end up making up about 80% of our caseload. Fair housing complaints are a bit more timely to address and investigate and form the main bulk of our mission and our mission's work. Within those two areas, and fair housing again would be anything having to do with housing discrimination or allegations of discrimination based on any of the state or federally protected classes, including race, gender, disability, familial status, as well as a number of different state-protected classes. Within those two programs, and tenant landlord would again be more related to cases of more traditional tenant landlord disputes, so not having to do with discrimination specifically, but more so notices to vacate or pair issues, things that might be more focused on the lease or a rental agreement in question. Within those two programs, there are variations, if you will, or iterations depending on what the context is of the clients that we're serving. And so for that reason, I list mobile home park-related matters and disaster relief and recovery as two other major components to our programs. Mobile home because they are governed by a specific set of laws by the state and disaster relief because in its various contexts, unfortunately, we have seen as a county, housing needs can change dramatically. And so what we might be doing to assist clients in one context might be very different from a different type of emergency or disaster. Just to put review, our services for victims of discrimination or tenants, we offer education regarding rights and responsibilities. We are very, we'd like to emphasize rights and responsibilities. Both tenants and landlords alike have rights in different contexts, but they also have obligations. And so we'd like to make sure that all of our clients, regardless of tenants, of there being a tenant or a landlord, are educated on what their rights may be in a specific context, but also what their obligations are to ensure that they stay compliant with landlord-tenant law, lease provisions or any other aspect of the tenancy in question. When there is an inquiry, we can conduct an intake, and so that is taking basic and specific information regarding the client and the matter into consideration so that we might determine the best way to address the inquiry and/or complaint. When there is a complaint regarding fair housing, so a housing discrimination complaint, we will conduct an investigation that could include testing, which is a form of secret shopper, if you will, whereby we can compare the experiences of prospective renters based on certain characteristics. We might take witness statements or we might conduct a survey of an entire property, depending on what the complaint may be. Should that complaint proceed and should there be sufficient evidence, our agency also prepares those complaints for administrative enforcement and/or litigation. So not just writing a narrative of what happened, but compiling evidence and compiling a case file that is easy enough to read by the authority in question in an effort to determine the merits of a fair housing complaint. And should that complaint be settled and/or discrimination confirmed, our agency will work with both parties to ensure that there's conciliation and advocacy. This is never more important, I think, than at this moment in time, given the extreme shortages of rental housing in the county. Anytime that there is a dispute whereby we can still preserve housing for the tenant, regardless of which side we may be assisting in terms of our own client, we really prioritize trying to do that. Realizing that anybody that is displaced at the moment could very well be forced out of the county due to a lack of other rental housing options, not just specific to American Canyon or Napa County even, but a region-wide problem that we see impacting the way that we address certain cases, just given the scarcity of rental housing in the region. And lastly, once a complaint has been settled, we will monitor both parties to ensure compliance with pertinent fair housing and/or landlord-tenant laws to ensure that this, whatever the issue may be, has been addressed and that there are no other concerns arising from it. For landlords or housing providers, we offer many of the same services. And we offer training and education regarding discrimination in housing. Again, that training covers both rights and responsibilities. Landlords and property managers have rights in various contexts. We want to make sure they're aware of those, but we also want to make sure that they're aware of what their obligations are in their given roles and what that might mean in terms of any additional actions they need to undertake. We always offer a review of policies and practices, both for property owners and property managers. Where necessary, we conduct intakes and offer counseling to address inquiries, complaints, concerns. There are complaints from time to time regarding tenants, just as much as there are complaints by tenants regarding landlords. So we try to address those again with an emphasis on housing preservation wherever possible. We realize that not every situation can be saved, but wherever we might be able to preserve the housing of one or more parties, we will certainly seek to do so. And lastly, continuing with many of the same services we offer tenants, mediation and conciliation of disputes, arriving at an agreeable result for both parties, again with an eye towards preserving housing. So what is fair housing? I left these slides in. I've been, in being considerate of the time that I have, I want to leave these slides here. They will remain as part of the packet. I've sent that packet to Brent and I'm happy to resend in a PowerPoint format. But essentially, fair housing is the right to housing choice free of discrimination. It is the promotion of inclusivity in communities and equal housing choice, and that is our primary mission as an agency. These laws also provide certain additional protections, for example, for people with disabilities and for survivors of domestic violence. This slide contains all of the state and federal protected classes that we apply to our work. Again, in the interest of time, I will leave this slide here, but if there are any questions at the end of the presentation, I'd be happy to cover any specific protected class and answer any questions the council or city staff may have. What I would like to really cover, and I know it's been a little over a year since I presented it to the council, and just want to sort of pick up where we left off last August, which if you all remember, we were approaching, but not quite at, the statewide eviction protection. We had a regional protection in place through the county. That protection expired in September of 2020, and what we saw implemented was the first of a couple of iterations of a state eviction protection for those that cannot pay rent due to a COVID-related reason. Those protections grew, evolved. The program itself grew and evolved to where the third iteration, or I'm sorry, the second iteration and then the third iteration, so AB 3088 and AB 832, created a program for rental assistance. The vast majority of our cases since March of 2020 have in some way, shape or form been impacted by the pandemic. You could argue all of them have been impacted by the pandemic, just given the change in context and needs, but a lot of them had to do with concerns regarding payment of rent, inability to pay rent and a fear of eviction. As of September last year, those fears were at least temporarily allayed, but what did not go away was the, for a lot of families, was the inability to pay rent due to ongoing impacts by the pandemic. In spring of 2021, some members of the city council, Vice Mayor Joseph and Mayor Garcia, along with other community stakeholders, elected officials throughout the county, met and began discussing funds that were going to be made available to the county through the state for payback of pandemic-related unpaid rent. That became what's called ERAP, Emergency Rental Assistance Program, that is administered through the state for counties smaller than 200,000 people, which includes Napa County. And that has also been one of the main focuses of our work, not just in American Canyon, but throughout the county. Through those discussions, as mentioned with the stakeholders, what was created was a small group of service providers, our agency, Fair Housing Napa Valley, Bay Area Legal Aid, On The Move and Up Valley Family Centers, which worked collaboratively to ensure that because there was no county program per se due to the size of the county, that there were service providers on the ground that could assist any tenant or landlord with completion of the ERAP application to ensure that the application was processed. And especially given, at least early on, especially, there were a lot of delays in terms of funding and processing of applications. And so this was an intent to speed up at least the part that we as a community could control, which was the submission of applications to ensure that they were not being, that they were being considered as quickly as possible and processed as quickly as possible. The way that ended up shaking out was that Up Valley Family Centers took, assisted all tenants north of Yonville, On The Move assisted all tenants south of Yonville, and Fair Housing Napa Valley assisted all landlord inquiries for the ERAP program throughout the county. I will go through some of the numbers here shortly, but since we began the program in August, we have more than doubled the number of applicants for the county. That has gone up from about 600 to about 12, just over 1250 as of yesterday or as of this afternoon, I'm sorry. And we have seen a lot of response. What we are now seeing is a continuation of those eviction protections, and I know I'm bouncing back and forth between the protections and the rental assistance. They really go hand in hand. The protections were meant to put off evictions, which otherwise would have occurred immediately due to non-paying of rent per the law in that context, and created a buffer period whereby tenants could not just, at least initially, try to pay a small portion of the rent they owed, but then later on, as the ERAP program became better rolled out and better implemented, it actually applied for up to 100% of unpaid rent. That might have been due, that might have been unpaid due to the pandemic itself. And so that's where we find ourselves now. The eviction protections, the last iteration expired at the end of September. That was AB 832. And so we have now the next phase of our assistance, which is looking at small claims needs and any remaining applications that might need to be completed and submitted to the state for processing. Small claims is an area that we're just starting to really get more involved in. We've worked with Bay Legal a little bit to understand guidelines. As we are not attorneys, we can't provide legal advice. As it is, small claims occurs without the assistance of an attorney, but we want to make sure that Bay Legal and any other partner is not overloaded with small claims inquiries. And as an agency, we see the small claims aspect of this work as a continuation of ERAP work. For those that were not able to be funded 100% by ERAP, they will have to face a claim in small claims court from their landlord for any monies that they may owe, as under the eviction protections, unpaid rent was, became converted debt from rent to a consumer debt that was collectible only in small claims. So if a tenant is in small claims, it's because the protections worked the way they were supposed to, but it also means they may not have had the same opportunity for funding through the ERAP program that other families and tenants may have enjoyed. So there are a number of differing buckets, if you will, that a tenant household might fall into, depending on their income, depending on personal and household circumstances. And so for that reason, we, as a group, as service providers, want to make sure that we're prepared for any and all outcomes that a tenant might face and also available to assist landlords with any questions along the way as they work with their tenants to address that rental debt. I know that was a lot of information, so I want to pause here. I know that was a lot of information, so I want to pause here and see if there are any questions regarding eviction protections, regarding ERAP, before I continue. Any questions from council? Vice Mayor Joseph?
A quick question. As you know, the mayor and I worked with you during the summer on this bold ERAP program. Are the payments getting processed any quicker? Back when we were more engaged, you know, the money just seemed to be lockjammed. Is it flowing better?
It definitely seems like it is. And I have a slide, one of the last slides I have will cover ERAP demographics and information. It's not just specific to the city of American Canyon, but will provide a county comparison as well, so you can see where the city falls in. One piece of data that is not on the slide that I really wanted to emphasize is that, given the location of the majority of the housing stock in the county, the cities of Napa and American Canyon were the two biggest sources for ERAP applications in the county. That was to be expected. But I think it also gives a good idea of demographic differences and perhaps other contextual differences that created some different outcomes in either city or in comparing the city of American Canyon to the county at large. So in really going over housing issues over this past year, anything and everything pandemic-related was at the forefront of the work that we were doing. We were certainly seeing the traditional landlord-tenant and fair housing complaints, but every case that we saw had some type of pandemic-related impact to it, whether it was the situation of a tenant or a landlord, the needs of either party, or the way the dynamics kind of played out as a result of the pandemic or what we could offer as an agency. You could feel COVID's fingerprints, if you will, on every single case in some type of way. So continuing with those housing issues and with an issue that I mentioned earlier is this regional rental housing stock crisis. And I know the word crisis has been thrown around for some time as it relates to housing in the Bay Area, but we are seeing extreme shortages all over the county, which really preclude tenants from being able to move within the county, especially low-income tenants. That's placed even more of an urgency on any displacement or eviction-related case that we see as an agency, because there is a realization, at least immediately by our staff, but eventually by the client, that if they are forced to move, there is a very good chance that they will not be in Napa County due to pricing and due to availability. And so that, as I mentioned, really changes the way that we address certain cases. And it addresses, it changes the way that a client might look at their own case. They may be more tolerant, for example, of certain adversities or unjust characteristics to their case, knowing that should they fight harder, there's a chance they might lose the housing that they're in and have to move out of Napa County. And so that may make tenants more hesitant to report repair issues. That may make tenants more hesitant to report other code enforcement or building issues, issues that might not just impact their health, but also their safety and the safety of others. So we're very cognizant of that. We certainly will, we certainly are conducting all of our work within the parameters of applicable laws, but also realizing that there may be an additional hesitance by tenants to raise certain issues, knowing that alternate housing may not be in Napa County. Traditional housing issues, as I mentioned, continue, but with, in the context of the pandemic and late last year in the context of the glass and the new fires. So the needs have shifted a little bit, depending on, sadly, what stage of either emergency we were in. There might be more of a need for resources. There might be more of a need for assistance. Now that the rain has started, for example, we're seeing more mold cases and more cases of leaks in housing throughout the county. So being mindful of where we are in the calendar, where we are as a community and a county in the context of the pandemic has allowed us to sort of actuate and adjust as we needed to throughout the year. We've also continued to see fair housing complaints. And I'll go into some data in terms of the more frequent causes for complaints in terms of protected classes. But one thing that I have noticed, especially over the last couple of years, I think as we saw the pandemic become a much longer-term issue, desparations and urgencies by individuals and families were exacerbated. Anybody that may have started out having difficulty to pay rent may have found themselves at a certain point in the pandemic, six, eight, 10 months behind on rent, and that creates more desperation. And desperation can create some very ugly situations. So one thing that we have seen, not specific to American Canyon at all, but throughout the county, is a rise in hate speech, a rise in race and national origin-related complaints. And again, this is something that we see in different contexts throughout the county. So it might impact the communities up valley differently than it does the communities in the cities of Napa and American Canyon, but it's the same type of issue, all the same. And so that is something that we are continuing to address as an agency, working with those tenants and clients involved to make sure that their complaints are addressed and investigated. And, excuse me, really want to just make ourselves available to all City of American Canyon residents and anybody in the county that may need our assistance in dealing with any complaint regarding racism or hate speech. So I really encourage anybody in the public that may be watching or city staff or city council members to please contact us if that's an issue that they see and something that they feel we might be able to address. So I wanted to go into case trends just a little bit. What you see are intake trends for, I'm sorry, I can't. Our intake trends for the calendar year 2021, the primary number that you see along the left is specific to American County. And the county comparison, so the overall county number for that same figure is in parentheses to the right. This does not count complaint basis, fair housing cases at the bottom. Those are overall for the county. We didn't run those reports by city. But you can see what is most prevalent. In general, in American Canyon, will apply to City of Napa and the rest of the county as it relates to disability, or as it relates to fair housing cases. Disability traditionally has been the most common protected class that where housing discrimination complaints have been based. We've seen a rise in national origin cases. That was about 20% the last time I gave this update. And a rise in race-related complaints as well. That was not a protected class that was listed previously. So race kind of overtook formidable status in terms of frequency for a basis of complaint. Notably in American Canyon, and again, based on demographics of American Canyon compared to the rest of the county, there was a much larger prevalence of African-American clients. This not necessarily related to demographics specific to the city, but we saw a much higher frequency of inquiries from households with disabilities in American Canyon as compared to the entire county. About the same rate of senior households in the city as compared with the county. A higher rate of households of three or more, which indicates a presence of children. Just a little bit higher than the county, but notable nonetheless. A much higher rate of female head of households indicating the presence of single mothers. And I'm not quite sure what the reason for that increase is, but very notable is all the same. You see the numbers below that for housing providers, so inquiries from landlords. That number is a lot higher than typical on any given calendar year typically. For the county, it's about 12%. The reason I believe this is higher this year all the way around is because of our work doing ERAP and the increased number of housing providers that we're working with through that program. And lastly, and this is always the most notable statistic to me, is that 90% of the tenants that we served were at or below low-income status. So 80% or lower of AMI. That was a bit of a higher number in American Canyon, I think just based on the lower rate of housing providers that we assisted within the city as related to the county. But as you can see, either county or city-specific, it's a very high rate. Almost nine out of 10 tenants that we assist are low-income tenants, and they make up the bulk of our client base. And they remain the focus of our programs. I have some ERAP data I can share, but just to make sure there are no questions. I know that there are quite a bit of numbers and a lot of information on the slide. Just want to make sure nobody has any questions.
I just have a question lines up. So affordability of housing, I wonder how, what impact that would have on these statistical numbers. You know, if you look at the cost of housing, say in St. Helena or in Napa versus American Canyon, why reflect the fact that folks who are economically vulnerable will certainly look for a more affordable housing stock? And certainly, American Canyon, I do believe I'm accurate in saying it's the most affordable spot in Napa County. So this was wondering.
I don't know the numbers in terms of affordability, but I would venture, I would guess that you're correct, Mayor Garcia. I think what you look at in terms of the issue with affordability, the differences in affordability throughout the county and how that impacts various demographics, is looking at more often than not, and without the data in front of me, who is more likely to be low-income as it impacts affordability? And the answer there is, are people of color. So when you look at what affordability means, which is in essence, the presence of housing opportunities based on income, you are eliminating those opportunities for low-income tenants who happen primarily to be people of color in other areas. So the inaffordability of certain areas is perpetuating segregation. But at the same time, there's not enough housing stock, even in affordable areas, to meet demand for low-income families. So it's, it's a rock and hard place type of situation where there's not enough, even if you could make it affordable. And what is available is not affordable either. And so that really leaves low-income tenants, regardless of race or membership in any other protected class, as the most vulnerable throughout the county. They may have less vulnerabilities or more opportunities, depending on how you want to put it, in the cities of American Canyon and Napa. But even those opportunities are much fewer and farther between than I think we would all like and than what is needed by those communities to stay in Napa.
Yeah, I just look at the, I think Big Room has all the real estate sites. And as you get a list of what's up market, what's just sold, and all the different jurisdictions and the prices sometimes.
Yeah.
It's kind of a shock factor for houses that are 40, 50, 60 years old, and so it's selling in the millions. So, yeah.
Well, and I'm sure you're aware, just given the regional work that you do, but you know, one of the other impacts of the pandemic has been migration. Migration from bigger cities into more secluded suburbs or into more enjoyable spaces or opportunities to places like in Napa County that might have a yard versus an apartment in Oakland or in San Francisco. Of working remotely has created more opportunities for those with means to move to these places. And so while we may see rents in San Francisco and Oakland sharply decreasing, we're seeing by the same token, rents in Napa County sharply increasing for the same reason. And so we are just on the wrong end of this trend as a county. And that will start in American Canyon and work its way up the county. Thank you. Okay. My last slide is data regarding ERAP. And so Vice Mayor Joseph, this is to answer your question regarding what has been paid. So just under $1 million, about 775,000 has been paid to American Canyon residents. That's out of a total of just over $4 million that's been paid out to county residents. The one thing you might note is that first bullet point shows that as a county, over $17 million has been applied for. My understanding is that the county was allocated $15 million total. So there is going to be a prioritization of who receives that funding. That was something that was made clear by the state at the outset of the program. So vulnerability, amount of rent owed, income status, other deciding factors are going to play a role into who gets awarded funds. And it's not a first-come, first-served basis. So I think that's been part of the cause for the delays. Early on, the state wanted to see who all was applying, make sure that the most vulnerable residents had an opportunity to get their applications in. Now that as a county, everything plus more has been applied for, I think the next question becomes, will there be additional funding made available to the county? My understanding is that there will be. It's not anything that I've heard confirmed, but from a number of different advocates, it's been something that has been discussed, not just for Napa, but for the state in general. And so as there are updates in that area, I will certainly update you all. But as of right now, we're continuing to accept applications. The program is continuing to accept applications. And so anything that we can do in this end to assist not only American Canyon, but Napa County residents, we will certainly be doing so hand-in-hand with our other partners in this program. But notable statistics demographically, a much higher prevalence of African-American applicants, a higher prevalence of Asian-American applicants, a little bit lower Latinx, but I suppose that's to be expected given the higher prevalence of other demographics. And right around the same as the county average in terms of senior households that might be applying. So not specifically anybody aged 60, but over 60 would indicate more of a presence of a senior household, and they are making up a noticeable portion of total applicants. The biggest, the most notable stat to me, similar to the last slide I showed, was the income demographics of these applicants. And so what you see is that a vast majority, you had, in order to be eligible for the ERAP program, you had to be at or below 80% of AMI for the months in question. But what we are seeing is at least just about 85%, both in the city and the county, are below 60% of AMI. So these are especially financially vulnerable residents that conceivably could have taken on a much larger, much larger share of rental debt, given their existing financial difficulties and financial vulnerabilities. So certainly want to make sure that we are as present and as available and accessible to these communities and these households as possible. And with that, that is the end of my presentation. I really appreciate this time to provide this update. But wanted to make sure that we have ample time for any other questions from council members or from city staff.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Very informative. Thank you. Appreciate, I'm sure we all did the work you do to help those who were through this very difficult time, take them. Questions, comments? Oh, very good. Good, thank you. You do very important work for those in the Indian Canyon. We just like to say thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the city's support and partnership and appreciate working with you as well.
Very good. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on with our agenda. If you have any public comment on items on the agenda? Don, you're doing it.
Council has received two comments, both regarding the climate action. Council has received two comments, both regarding the climate action proclamation. And that's the only written comments that we've received.
Okay, thank you.
I do see some hands up for, for oral comment. I have Tammy Wong. Go ahead, Tammy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
First, I, I want to thank you for the climate change proclamation. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Joseph for his suggestion to change the proclamation to a resolution. I think that's a great idea and I would just like to offer my support for that idea. And if there's any help that I can provide in that endeavor, please let me know. I didn't originally want to make a public comment related to the climate emergency proclamation. Speaking as an American Canyon resident for over ten years now, I have a new appreciation for living in a small town that's mostly flat. I took the climate emergency proclamation to heart. And when I went to the dentist this week, I rode my bicycle. That was a great way to replace a fossil fuel trip with a bicycle. You know, me being a plant powered person trip. So I felt very green in doing that. And what I would love to just continue to support council to do is anytime we have an opportunity before us, let's continue to push for more bicycling access and support and infrastructure. Everything we do now is not to support bicyclists of today, which aren't, which are, you know, there's a fair amount of numbers, but what we're building now for the future is to support the bicyclists of the future, five, ten, twenty years from now, which is what the Broadway District's specific plan strives to do. So in that respect, I did want to touch on one aspect of Hampton Inn. It's not about the zoning change. What I wanted to bring up was the pedestrian access bridge. I know it was originally slated for six feet, staff recommended ten feet. And quite honestly, I'd like to see that be twelve feet. I feel that will better position us for the future. I'd just like to point out that the south side of Donaldson, that's where the mixed shared use trail is. So bicyclists will be riding down Donaldson. They will come through Hampton Inn to reach Canyon Plaza. If they're on their bicycle, if they want to go shopping there, they're going to walk across that bridge. So a bridge is very hard to modify in the future. So before it's built, you know, I'm just asking council for your support to consider it. Instead of ten feet, let's see if we can make that twelve feet. Let's build this for the future when we do have more bicyclists. When, you know, all the youth who are speaking for climate change, you know, they're going to be out there riding their bicycles as well, the next generation. So, you know, I, I just, I just wanted to put this out there. And I also wanted to thank the city for the improvements they've made for bicycling on the wetlands linear path. You may not know this, but they've recently installed trail markings about sharing the path, which I think are wonderful. They're very highly visible. And I understand those stencils are going to be placed on more of the shared use, shared use path, bicycling paths in the city. And they've just installed the posts and I'm looking forward to seeing the trail signs going up, encouraging more bicycle etiquette and awareness. I think anything we can do to support bicycling is great. And I thank you for your attention to this matter and hope you all have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Rick Hess. Go ahead, Rick.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to say, I really appreciated the opportunity last week for the developers to have the forum and to all the things that we talked about. I felt like it was very helpful. And I just wanted to inquire, is there going to be a report that's generated as to all the things that we talked about? And is there any consideration of any of the comments or suggestions that were provided? Any implementation of any of those comments or input? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Holly, any thoughts coming?
Yeah, it's a great question and we appreciate Rick and, and all of the developers who were at our meeting last Tuesday. Staff is still digesting all the information that we, that we heard and trying to come up with some ideas about what, what's the next steps are. We appreciate all the information, took a lot of notes. And I, I don't know that we're going to have a report necessarily, but we do need to figure out what we're going to do with that existing plan, how we're going to view those ideas that we've heard, really valuable. So we haven't yet, I think, probably got it wrapped around how that might play out, but we appreciate the input.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hess. That was very important thinking.
Okay. I have Emily Bit. Emily, go ahead with your comment.
Good evening, American Canyon City Council. So my name is Emily and I'm here tonight with Lisa Kresh. And we're going to be speaking on behalf of Napa Schools for Climate Action. We just kind of wanted to first extend our gratitude to the city staff for, you know, their continuous dedication towards a safe and inclusive and respectable community. After our presentation to the council in September, we're truly overjoyed that our concerns have been taken into consideration and action is now being implemented. And then just a huge thank you to Mr. Brent Cooper for piecing together such a strong and admirable climate emergency proclamation. We believe that your acknowledgement of this crisis, it's, first, it's really appreciated. And we also believe that it will launch American Canyon onto the right path towards a brighter future. But we're public commenting tonight in support of Vice Mayor Joseph's request to transition the proclamation to a resolution. While proclamations are important, it's increasingly clear that they're not as effective as resolutions, which are by definition, a firm decision to do or not do something. So we just thank you for both your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Alyssa Karaj. Go ahead, Alyssa.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, American Canyon City Council. My name is Alyssa Kresh. And as you already know, I'm the other co-president of Napa Schools for Climate Action. First of all, just as Emily has said before, I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you in September. It gave our generation the chance to speak up and talk about the issues that we find the most passing. Since then, the city council and the city staff have been actively working to implement our asks, one of which is the topic of tonight's discussion. The proclamation, which we have requested the city to pass, will be a huge step forward for American Canyon. The proclamation will acknowledge the existence of our climate crisis. And thanks to the city staff, specifically Mr. Ben Cooper and Mr. Jason Holly, the proclamation will have similar wording to our school district's resolution. We cannot be more grateful for all of your hard work and for acknowledging the need to decrease our emissions to net zero by before the year 2030. We would, of course, love to see this proclamation turn into a resolution. And we'd also love to reiterate the words that our advisor, Jim Wilson, often speaks of. Taking small steps and lowering our emissions at a slow rate equates to practically, practically no action. Of course, some action is better than none, but only quick and significant steps count in the face of this climate disaster. Hence, we urge you to pass the resolution. Nevertheless, we want to thank you for all of your hard work. You are listening to our youth and are taking our asks seriously. Our work is being off and the future is beginning to look more hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a user Zoom five SCS. If I could get your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Linda Brown. I'm sorry I didn't rename myself. I had, I had a question. And I, I fell off the Zoom a few minutes ago, so I just got myself back on.
Okay.
I'm Linda Brown from, I'm a Napa County resident of twenty-three years. I'm co-founder of Napa Climate Now. We are a nonpartisan group of concerned citizens dedicated to finding solutions to the climate crisis based on the latest climate science. And we've had the privilege to, to be present at past meetings and, and to present our points of view. Thank you for so much for tonight's proclamation. That the language is very strong and reflects a clear understanding of the scale and the urgency of the climate crisis, as reflected in its stated intention to review policy and planning decisions through the climate change filter and recognizing the need for community participation and support for immediate and sustained action and particularly for its goal of achieving net zero climate pollution by 2030. Those are incredibly important pieces, each one of them. And it's particularly timely. And my comment really has to do with coming on the heels of COP twenty-six. We saw in Glasgow, and I put this in my written comments, of course, as well, that it's really difficult for countries to negotiate sufficiently to meet the extreme climate challenges. They're, they're always struggling because of national interests, competitiveness, you know, the politics. But if, if we're behind them, if we stand behind them and your climate emergency proclamation puts American Canyon right there, front and center, saying it's time, that's what they need to negotiate, knowing their citizens are behind their actions. The most powerful voices in Glasgow, as we all witnessed over the last two weeks, were obviously not the government officials, but it was the voices of our youth. It was Greta, it was all the people who marched. And those are the people we're fighting for. We've all, you know, brought upon ourselves, even in my lifetime, I'm sixty-three years old. And in my lifetime, we've gone from, you know, all the possibilities of the world to this frightening world that we're handing over to our kids and our grandkids. And we owe it to them to take every single step we can to move toward climate restoration and to do no further harm. And we can't, we can pat ourselves on the back, but we all know it's not going to be easy and it's going to require sacrifice. But there's a lot of opportunity here for innovation.
Does he have a ten second warning?
Okay, last point is that I support Schools for Climate Action and the resolution made by the vice mayor to, or proposed by the vice mayor. Napa Climate Now wants to go on record supporting that you take the next step and go to a full climate emergency resolution.
Thank you, Linda. Round of time for you. Thank you. I have Justin. Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening. This is Justin. I live here long time. I was too. I was, I'm going to get very happy myself. I see something on agenda. I think tonight, tonight, I could be guessing a new house, building a new house, four, four, five, three, four house. And I have a little kid, there's no sidewalk over there. So I am very happy. This, this is it. I know I hear that last summer, last year's summer, but now we're discussing tonight. I am very happy and I hope we're going to get new house in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. I have Jim Wilson. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Jim Wilson, new grandfather, retired quality manager, Napa County resident and volunteer with Napa Climate Now and Napa Schools for Climate Action. I teach climate responsibility in the schools. Great job to you all. You're on the right track with your climate emergency proclamation. Thank you. I think a key you made, a key point you made in your amended general plan with respect to climate is that you're calling for decisive near term action. Near term action is what it's going to take. And that requires leadership, which your team is showing by your open mindedness, dedication, and daring to go first. Now, Calistoga has a, a plan to ban gas stations in the works. In last month's Climate Action Committee meeting, Schools for Climate Action presented their asks. Like American Canyon and Calistoga, now the St. Helena City Council heard students present their asks last week. And Yonko has expressed an interest in their presentation as well. Worldwide, over two thousand communities have passed climate emergency resolutions, including Napa Valley High School District, Calistoga, each of the cities in Sonoma County, the County of Sonoma, and the Sonoma County Regional Climate Protection Authority. There's a wealth of comprehensive strategies and countermeasures already at hand in their resolutions and many others to get us to our 2030 goal of net zero climate pollution. We are deep in a climate emergency. People don't understand that. We can expect to overshoot one point five degrees C. That's why I support without delay, an action focused climate emergency resolution. Join our neighbors, share new ways about thinking and doing with a focus on climate care and move on it. I just want to finish by sharing that in last month's Climate Action Committee meeting, committee members responded to student appeals for immediate climate action. My feelings were summed up by Vice Mayor Mark Joseph's words, who said, and I quote, "You should leave any organization you start better than when you founded. If you apply that to the planet as a generation, we should have left things better than we got it." And in this case, we're doing the reverse.
Ten, twenty second warning.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to finish Mark's quote. And, and in this case, we're doing the reverse. So on behalf of boomers everywhere, we need to step up and do what we can before it's too late. End quote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia, I have no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate the public comments. Moving on to the, the changes. I don't accept the motion for the consent calendar. We'll move to adopt the consent calendar. So, motion second, roll call please.
I'm sorry, it was Councilmember Washington was the motion.
Ora.
Ora. Councilmember Ora was the motion and then.
Joseph was the second.
Joseph was the second. Sorry, I, yeah, it's hard when I can't see you guys. Okay. Councilmember Abadamos.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington, uh, Councilmember Ora.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Moving on now to public hearings. Agenda number twelve, Rio Del Mar tentative map, a tentative parcel map and design permit extension.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll turn it over to Community Development Director Frank Cooper. Thank you.
Thank you, a mayor and council member. We have a tentative map that has, uh, close to expiring. And as Mr. Hamilton Hall pointed out, the neighborhood could use a few new houses. But the map needs to be extended or it will expire. And it's at the discretion of the city council to grant an extension. The staff were recommending that it be extended because, of course, we all know housing is in short supply. And this would enable the property owners to move forward with the project. They do have the planning approval process. A lot of technical work has been done. Just needs to have an extension to their tentative map. William He is also the project manager, shepherding the application and prepared the staff report today. I don't know if he has a presentation, if you have any questions.
Any questions, council, before we open the public hearing? Is this, vice, your answer?
More of a technical question as far as what's involved. Justin, for example, brought up the idea of sidewalks. So my question is, will this, will the project have to basically put in sidewalks and do something with the open channel there on Rio Del Mar as a part of the improvement?
Vice Mayor Joseph, there is a, a obligation to construct a sidewalk along their frontage. There are overhead power poles. They will be undergrounding the wires. Poles in the side will stay, of course, but it'll clear some of the sky from overhead lines, which I think we're all looking forward to seeing. There was tremendous discussion about the, the channel next to Rio Del Mar. There are wetland resources there and the water board for regional Bay Area would not permit it to be placed underground. And so it'll be retained, but it'll be fenced. And that's just the way it has to be.
And the sidewalk improvement, I can see the important kind of runs out before it gets to the corner in the next few, which has sidewalks. All right, very good. Any other questions for council before we open the public hearing? Any other questions from council before we open the public comment? If not, I will have a public comment at this time.
Mayor Garcia, my notes say that we should be expecting a Risham Singh to join the panel. I do not see a name that looks like that. If Risham Singh is in the audience, if you could please raise your hand and I can move you over? I don't have him on, so.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Josh is speaking, yes, I can hear you, Josh.
Yes, Risham's my business partner, he sent me an email saying he dropped Zoom on accident somehow, and he's trying to log back in, so I can meet up there.
Okay.
I don't have anything to say, Tyler Kelly's present as well.
Okay, fine. I have no other hands up, there are no hands up at this time.
And then we have a, Mr. Singh, is he trying to log back on? Is that our understanding?
He is, but his partners, Josh Smith and Tyler Kelly, are on, and they're able to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions of the developers, council? Any comment from the developers with regards to this effort? Vice Mayor Joseph?
I do have one question, and given the fact that this has gone on for a while, even if we extend this, I guess what I'm looking for is, what's the assurance that we'll see construction if we provide a one-year extension? I frankly don't want to be back here in another year saying, okay, let's give a few more months. So are you guys ready to go?
At this moment, we're not ready to go, as you've been involved on a variety of emails, Mr. Joseph. We had a buyer who wanted to buy this and wanted to develop, and we weren't getting a response from staff, or from council, or from anybody at American Canyon in order to get an answer due to the circumstances of COVID and delays and our tentative map status, and that buyer has since walked and is not in the picture. But we are actively marketing the property and are fielding calls and fielding prospective buyers. But the current pulling the permit to begin construction is not at this very moment, no.
Other comment? Do we have any other public comment on this matter?
Mayor Garcia, I have Justin Hamilton, who would like to make the comment. Go ahead, Justin.
Oh, hello again. So, um, yeah, it's been there, that hill's been there all the time. I have a little kid, and me, my brother was walking down there, and there's no house on there. And I was looking at the, it had no house there, and it's such a grass, it's dead grass there, and I see a sign, you know, how long it gonna be like this right now? My question, thank you.
Question?
Any other speakers for public comment?
No other public, nobody has up at this time.
Any other comment from the developer side?
Not at the moment, thank you.
All right, very good, well then I will close public comment and we'll return to the city council for further discussion. Well, what was the delay in the response to their information they needed moving forward? Seemed to be some question, they said they could get a response. Will you have something?
Mayor, I understand that there was a request by the applicant some months ago to put the project on hold from its engineering review. More recently, there were some technical requests from the property owner on legal issues related to their map validation. That staff was unable to answer because they're taking legal questions. They could have had their own legal counsel answer them, but they elected to file an application that enabled us to have our city attorney respond to those as well, which led to an opinion on how long the map is valid. I believe the city attorney also extended it a little further so that we could have a conversation about extending the map tonight.
Is that response from the city attorney timely?
Yes, it was.
Okay. All right. Has a comment from council? Councilmember Ora?
No, I was gonna actually make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021, next in order, if nobody else had any comments. It's a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon, California, approving a 12-month extension to the Rio Del Mar tentative parcel map and design permit from December 17, 2021 to December 17, 2022, located at the vacant lot northeast of the West Carolina Drive and Rio Del Mar intersection. APN 058-162-012 and 058-162-013, file number PL21-0030.
Second? Okay, um.
Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Ora?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Move on to our next public hearing. Close lodging in the local serving mixed-use, LSMU zoning district, and a conditionally permitted for Hamilton and hotel.
Mayor, before we get started on this item, I actually have a conflict of interest on this, so I'm gonna be stepping away from this matter and turning off my screen, and you all can continue.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Garcia, I have a few speakers to move over.
Any discussion from council at this point?
Did we ever discover whether or not it was gonna be happened in and suite, or just happened in?
Councilmember Washington, I did pose that question to the applicant and received a response that they will look into the issue, so perhaps they'll explain that tonight. But I did wanted to say, mayor and council members, that very grateful to William He and his work on the project, he's the project manager, and then when everybody has been moved over, Mr. He has a presentation to kind of run you through the different issues on zoning. He'll start whenever, whenever you give the signal.
Okay, I am the person coming to choose moving people over. I'm going to just give them permission to talk. It doesn't allow them to turn their video on. But I'll continue to try to move them, but at least they can participate so we can start.
Okay.
Can everybody see okay?
That's very clear.
Okay. Thank you, Brent. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. My name is William, I'm with the Planning Division, and I'm here to give a presentation on the Hampton Inn project. So today, I'm gonna talk a bit about the project timeline overall, give a, show the location map, then we'll talk about the local serving mixed-use, LSMU zone change overall. Then we'll talk about the project site features. Then we'll go over the site-specific issues, as Director Cooper mentioned earlier. And lastly, we have the CECL California Environmental Quality Act information and staff's recommendation. So today we have two items for the city council to consider. The first one is an ordinance to adopt an amendment to the local serving mixed-use zone to include lodging, such as hotels, as a conditionally permitted use. Right now, lodging is prohibited in the zone at the ordinance, but the amendment to the LSMU zone will allow it in the future. The second item is a resolution to adopt an addendum to the Broadway District specific plan program environmental impact report for the Hampton Inn project. So here's a bit of a background for the project overall. It started in August of 2020, that's when they submitted. We had a city council workshop in December of that year. The applicants provided us a hotel marketing study in March of this year, which explained that there is a demand for more hotel rooms in the South Napa County area. And then in August of this year, we received the Broadway District addendum and reviewed it and found that it was ready. And we had a second workshop, was this time joint with the city council and the planning commission on October 5. And that brings us to October 28th, was the planning commission hearing for the project, and that's where they recommended approval for the project overall. And here we are today, it's the first part for the local serving mixed-use zone change and the addendum. Here is the Hampton Inn location, it's, the site is about 2.5 acres. It's rectangular in size, it's currently, it's accessible from Broadway, Highway 29 southbound. And it's directly north of the Canyon Plaza shopping. Today's, the existing conditions of the site is, we consider it an underutilized property. There are non-conforming conditions, where the structures to the north are too close to the property line. There's a residence that's converted to commercial use. There's actually also a earthquake fault on the northeast side of the, of the site itself, and a large portion of the property to the rear is, is not vacant. So here is the local serving mixed-use zones overall. It is a subarea within the Broadway District. With the consideration to amend the local serving mixed-use zone to add hotels, we looked at four sites overall. Site number one is the proposed site for the Hampton Inn. Site number two is the vacant lot that's at Crawford and Highway 29. Site number three in the pink is where we have American Canyon Concourse, General Plumbing, and Bravo area upriver. And the last, the Paishage site, number four, is where we have the Masonry Building as well as these three single tenant homes. So all of those sites were reviewed in the addendum as well. So we looked at the zone for consistency with hotels. So the local serving mixed-use zone, it was intended to support existing and future retail local needs. Some of the permitted uses are retail, multifamily residential, office. And hotel provides customers that support to local businesses and also the residents would enjoy it also. Looking at the CECL compliance, the initial study and addendum, the, the report found that there were no new significant impacts if we added the hotel use to it. And that's not just for that site, but for the entire LSMU zone. So what needs to be done to, to add this use? It's actually just changing a dash to a C. So we have to look at Table 2-3 in the Broadway zoning district permitted use table. And at the column for local serving mixed-use, or the row for lodging services, we have to convert the dash to conditionally permitted use. Staff looked at the option for either a conditional use permit or a design permit and felt that the conditional use permit would be more suitable for the LSMU zone. This is so that it adds some discretion to the approval process for hotels in the future. Many of the local serving mixed-use zones are infill sites, and they're, they have like neighbors that's been there for a long time, and requiring a conditional use permit will give the planning commission a little bit more discretion in the future. So that's what it's for, the LSMU zone change. I did want to say that the applicant has provided a revised site plan after the city council packet was submitted. So this, this site plan is newer than the one that we have online right now. Before we get to the site features, I wanted to mention that. The latest site plan adds a sidewalk from the hotel to Donaldson Way. It adds 12 more bicycle parking spaces, or a total of 20, and added eight future electric vehicle parking spaces, for a total of 15. And we revised the pedestrian path to Canyon Plaza from five foot wide to 10 foot wide. So with that being said, this is now the new site features. The site overall is 2.53 acres. It's a 112-room hotel, Hampton Inn. Previously, it was one of six, but they, they added the vacant lot to the northwest of the site, and with the more parking, they, and the connection to Donaldson Way, they added six more rooms. The hotel is three stories tall and 61,000 square foot overall. They have many of these, many of these include a swimming pool, a meeting room, and fitness center. And the total for parking is 119 parking spaces. About 0.67 acres of landscaping and now 20 bicycle parking spaces. So here's the latest site plan. The, the site overall is marked in red, and here, you can see my cursor, that's the new vacant lot that they added to the site plan overall. Here's a new five-foot sidewalk, so pedestrians could walk from Donaldson into the hotel, and they could follow the path and actually walk to the pet bike bridge that goes south into Canyon Plaza. The, the previous site plan had eight bike parking spaces in the northeast side of the building. Here's the additional six east of the swimming pool, and then there will be six more in the interior of the building if, if need for additional bike, bike parking comes up. So that takes us to the site-specific issues. There, there are a few that I wanted to go over. I know you've heard about some of them before. So there's the architecture, the hotel marketing study, the hotel brand assurance, the utility undergrounding, the pedestrian and vehicle connections, public outreach, and then I wanted to talk about some of the, the planning commission reading suggestions that came up in the last meeting with the planning commission. So let's just dive into it. The architecture, in the first submittal, it was a modern look for the hotel, and three colors, which were kind of out of place where they proposed. In the, I think it was the second submittal, they took our feedback and they converted the architectural style to a modern. the architectural style to a modern farm style architecture that harmonizes with the, with the house, the architecture from the Canyon Plaza and also surrounding development there. So that's resolved. The hotel marketing study that was conducted by EPS, they saw that there, there was an unmet demand for about 275 upper mid scale and upscale rooms in Southern Napa County by 2025. And, you know, pre-pandemic hotel market conditions are set to recover in 2021 and 2022. And so, and also that the, the new proposed hotel will compete directly with the upscale and mid scale hotels in Napa County. So they confirmed that there is room for another hotel in the city. And they also explained that the hotel would generate 25 jobs on site and stimulate economic multiplier effects in the city and provide some tax dollars to the city's general. I wanted to share a map of the existing and approved hotel sites in the city. We have three approved and existing hotels. They're all on the east side of the highway, all the Inn Express, Fairfield Inn, and Doubletree Inn. And then we have the, the Home Two Suites that was entitled last year and they're set for construction soon, very soon. And then we have two proposed hotels, the Hampton Inn, what we're talking about today, but also the Watson Ranch Hotels, kind of earmarked for Watson Ranch area. So that leaves us with two sites for future hotels, which would be the Marshall's Honeycock Farm site, north of the city hall, that's a four acre site. If a suitor goes and wants to develop a hotel there. And also another potential site would be the Crawford at 29 site. So, so there you have it for hotels. And, oh, I wanted to follow up that we, you know, we, we passed the marketing study to visit Napa Valley and President Ms. Lindsay Gallagher reviewed it and kind of concurred with the findings and also shared that American Canyon has a niche for central worker and per diem travelers, that for, as their hotel users. And that, that niche has remained stable even during the downturns. So the, and also the limited service hotel occupancy kind of outpaced all other sectors during the downturn. Cambra Hotel is a new hotel in Napa and it's nearing completion and there's, there's going to be, other hotels are less likely to compete with existing hotels in American So this goes to the brand assurance that council member Washington hinted at earlier. So we, we took the feedback from the city council workshop and, and passed it on to the applicant about, you know, how do they assure that it's going to be Hampton Inn brand? And they, they provided us with their franchise agreement and explained that they, it's a severe financial obligation for them to, to do a Hampton Inn hotel. And the, the agreement requires Hampton Inn architects and all sorts of other binding clauses for that, for the agreement. But just to be on the safe side, staff developed a special development agreement to lodging in the local serving mixed use zone. And that requirement says prior to the approval of any discrepancy, discretionary application for lodging in the LSM use zone, the applicant shall demonstrate that their proposed project shall meet or exceed the criteria to achieve a three star or higher rating in the Forbes Travel Guide Rating System. So Forbes is an internationally world renowned travel guide and, you know, if, if the, any future projects can achieve a three star or more, then they can proceed to, to submit applications for the LSM use zone. The fourth item for the special issues was the undergrounding of the overhead utilities. The Broadway Specific Plan requires all new development to underground existing overhead utilities that are onsite or adjacent to the site. And they, this project had one pole. It took a bit of research for them to, to find a way to underground it and not impact neighboring sites. But they found that the, that pole only serves their site and they, they found a way to, to energize the site from Donaldson Way. So they are committed to underground the utility. The pedestrian and vehicle connections, so in the city council workshop, they, we reiterated that we wanted to see a connection on Donaldson Way and also Canyon, connection to Canyon Plaza. So this, the latest site plan shows that they will have a vehicle and pedestrian connection on Donaldson Way. And then the connection to Canyon Plaza will be a 10 foot wide pedestrian bike bridge. Here's a picture of where the, where the bridge would lead into Canyon Plaza. Public outreach efforts, the applicant has conducted a lot of outreach efforts. Starting in May, they mailed out the project along with the plans to neighbors within a 300 foot radius. They received 12 letters of support, that's in the staff report. And, and city staff also mailed notices in September of this year. We had a workshop in October. And then we have our formal public notices in October for the planning commission hearing. And then we also had a public notice for this hearing in November 4th. So this leads to the planning commission hearing and some of the suggestions that came from the planning commissioners. You know, ultimately they approved the recommendation of the project, but they suggested an increase of bicycle parking from eight, which now they have complied with, with the, well, at least they made a good faith effort to increase it from eight to 20. And then they suggest, the planning commission also suggested an increase for electric vehicle charging from seven and the current, the latest site plan shows 15. And they also suggested that the pet bike bridge to Canyon Plaza should be widened from five foot to 10 or 12 feet. So there was also a question regarding the deceleration lane to the proposed Hampton Inn. I'll go over that slide after this, but the applicant took in those suggestions and reached review them. And that's, and that's why there was the updated plan that came about a week, a week and a half later. So there was a question about the safety of getting into the future Hampton Inn site at, if there was a deceleration lane. This, this graphic shows that there is. The, the upper picture shows the north of Donaldson Way lane and that, that decelerate is already there on the far right. And then if you're coming from the south of Donaldson, the decelerate is consistent also. I think our engineering teams here today also, and they can probably give some more insight on the decelerate. So lastly, the environmental review. First carbon was the team that prepared the Broadway District Specific Plan Program EIR overall. And they're also the team that prepared the environmental assessment for the Hampton Inn Zone Change and additional use permit. The assessment provides justification for the addendum and to the Broadway District So with that being said, staff's recommendation is to approve the ordinance to adopt an amendment to the local serving mixed use zone to include lodging as a conditionally permitted use and approve the resolution to adopt an addendum to the Broadway District Specific Plan Program EIR for the Hampton Inn project. So that concludes my report. I think the applicants are here too. If you have any questions for me, they're free.
Well, Mr. Hay, thank you for your, your report. Appreciate that, addressed a lot of the issues I know that were raised in our previous discussion on this matter. Questions from council at this time? Vice Mayor Joseph?
I have a quick question and it's actually relating to the, the conditions of approval, so it's probably premature, but one of the concerns we got from our last, our developer workshop last week was the concern about safety and crime. And I read about, you know, vehicle burglaries at, at hotels. So my question really relates to, are, do we have good security provisions in the condition of approval, at least to the satisfaction of our police chief? Is my primary question. My other comment was, I did have a resident ask about the deceleration, so I'm glad that the planning commission addressed it and we'll get clarification because I thought we had it and that seems to be the case. But, but I am concerned that we have adequate security provisions. So if you, someone could address that?
Vice Mayor Joseph, we did check in with the police regarding the project. It was suggested that this might be, if they had a connection on Donaldson, might be a source of potential breaks in the crimes. And, and the police did comment that it's not a high crime area. The, I'm sure the applicant could explain what protocols they have for hotels that they just naturally build into the project. And we do have some time before we bring back the conditional use permit to the council. And if there's a general consensus, we could certainly have the sheriff's office with their community policing through environmental design team take a look at it perhaps if, if there's a feeling that there's a need for, for maybe some additional measures.
I would certainly look forward to that because I, the reality is it becomes, you know, when it exists, it draws attention to itself. The classic is we never had vehicle burglaries or commercial burglaries until Saford was built, then all of a sudden we did. So the fact that there isn't any similar crime in that area is because there's no hotel there yet. So I definitely would like to see us look at the kinds of things from surveillance cameras to, to whatever, to, to protect the, the developers as well as our community's sense of safety. So that would be the one thing I would ask everyone to look into. Thank you.
Councilmember, councilmember O'Connell, you're handsome.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Hay and, and Mr. Cooper. What a wonderful project. This thing is actually going to take the corner and turn it into something good. Connect it with an existing property that's going to add connectivity and possible commerce to the businesses that are already existing there. They worked hard on this to meet the design standards that we have in town. They're taking down the power pole that we wanted and they really worked at that. And most importantly, they took into account the northbound access on Donaldson so that their guests and tourists could get up to the Napa Valley a lot easier than going through the U-turn death march of Highway 29. Very supportive of this, I'm glad of the work of the planning commission and what we've done and the proposed site looks great and I'm looking forward to approving this.
Councilmember Washington?
Yeah, I echo what Councilmember O'Connell and Vice Mayor Joseph both mentioned. And I like some deterrent type, camera type ideals to come up if, if that's something they're going to talk about as well. But reference into the bikes, I'd like to add more bikes. But are they going to, are these going to be covered bike areas? Because again, you know, a bike overnight may draw crime as well as burglary. So I'm just trying to figure out ways that we're looking at, you know, give us some covered bicycle parking, is that, is that part of the plan?
Well, thank you for the question, Councilmember Washington. At the moment, the 14 bicycle parking spaces are not covered, they're short term parking. And they're, they're saying that they will have six indoors that are covered in long term in the future. But the municipal code requires only eight for the bicycle parking.
If I could maybe elaborate on that, Councilmember Washington, we had a very robust conversation about bicycle parking. There's perhaps a need to, to take a look at the code and some of our other policies and maybe have some sync and sync. All that being said, I'm sure the applicant can say it best for themselves, but the message that we heard from the applicant that I would take to heart is, you know, they're there to supply the needs of their clients. And if there's in fact a demand, you know, for, for bikers who may be using the vine trail as part of their experience here in Napa Valley, if there was a demand for bicycle parking, then they'd be more than willing to accommodate it. They do have on their site plan a place for indoor bicycle parking should, should the demand be there. But that in general was the upshot of the planning commission discussion on the subject.
Okay, and I, and I remember the last time we had the conversation, they were going to look into finding out about the, whether it be in an inn or a suite. And I guess it was the size of the rooms they were talking about, they had to have an additional eight rooms that were a certain size. And I know we mentioned earlier that they hadn't gotten back to you. I'm just curious where they are with that. When, when they get an opportunity to speak, I was hoping they might be able to mention where that might stand.
Councilmember Obamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you everyone for your presentations. I also wanted to thank the applicants for being so responsive. I feel like everything that we've addressed is a concern or a comment that we've made, they've come back and responded to it, such as the second entrance and the undergrounding of the utilities. And Brent, please, help me clarify, it sounds like the bridge to Canyon Plaza was initially supposed to be five feet, but the planning commission wanted it to go bigger? And it sounds like the applicant changed it to a 10 foot bridge? Is that correct?
Not exactly. When there was a discussion about providing a pedestrian access, there was no mention of what an appropriate width would be. During our weekly project review committee meeting, we consulted with our public works cousins and suggested what might be an appropriate dimension for a bridge that could accommodate pedestrians and, and bicyclists. But also too, if you think about, you know, there's two people going to go walk over to Rick's Center for dinner and then coming the opposite direction or maybe two other people. If you've got five feet, you're kind of, you're kind of squished in there and excuse me, excuse me kind of thing, or someone hangs out at one end while the others. 10 feet is just, that's just more comfortable with for, for people to pass by, particularly when you consider that when you have a bridge, you're going to have those side rails, which unlike a sidewalk, you know, it, it provides both a physical and a perceived constraint to, to width. So 10 feet felt in, in the minds of our engineers, who are very good at those sorts of standards, to be appropriate with for, for, for a bridge. And then one final thought is, is the bridge itself is, it's not that long. It's, I think about 35 feet in length. So we're not talking about a big structure to begin with. When we had the meeting at the planning commission, there were some commissioners that When we had the meeting at the planning commission, there were some commissioners that felt that 12 feet would be a little better than 10.
I understand, thank you. And five feet isn't even wide enough for social distancing, so you don't need, you don't need four people to be walking, you just need two. And then the last thing is, I randomly ran into Sheriff Ortiz this afternoon at a restaurant during lunch, and he mentioned that they had done a security analysis or whatever, going back to Vice Mayor Joseph's question. And I see that Chief Greenberg is on, so I don't know if you were satisfied with the answer you received or if you want to hear from Chief Greenberg more information.
Chief Greenberg?
Thank you. Good evening. I don't know if my video is working or not, but.
I don't have it on video.
I was unable to move him completely over for video, but he's able to speak.
That's fine. My voice is here, that's good enough, right?
Yes, we can hear you.
So, you know, just general provisions on hotel and whatnot would be security cameras. You know, once the, you know, that should be kind of like in the works, you know, it's in the beginning. And then we could always talk with the hotel once it's established about putting up the new flock camera system, as that's a huge help to law enforcement. Especially, you know, if there's only two entrances in and out, you know, it's an easy placement of the cameras. So that's something we can work with the hotel as it develops.
Okay. Take your questions, your concerns, council? Vice Mayor, your hand still up?
Yes, first of all, I was remiss in not echoing Councilmember Obadamas's comments, but I do appreciate how responsive the developers have been. Literally, everything we asked them to do, they did. I know sometimes they didn't do it with a smile, but they got it done, and that's sometimes what counts. A couple of comments. Number one, I think the 10-foot dimension, if I'm not mistaken, is kind of the standard for the Napa Valley Vine Trail. So for purposes of saying what's an appropriate width, I think 10-foot seems to be a pretty good one. And then the second one is just throwing it out there on the bikes. I don't know if they considered the possibility of a bike rental, you know, to have two or three bikes available for rent in case your patrons feel like cycling. The community is something to look at. I certainly wouldn't want to condition it, but I'm just throwing it out there as your.
Does this opportunity present itself?
Yeah. You know, as we become more bicycle-friendly, we're liable to have more patrons who want to cycle. So, but like I said, I also want to have a shout out to the 15 EV charging stations. Thank you very much. Because right now, as it turns out, American Canyon, for all of its environmental concerns, has the lowest number of EV charging stations in the county, which is an embarrassing thing for me to have to acknowledge. So now I can come back and say, we are about ready to see some three-digit increases in the percentage of our charging stations. So thank you for that.
I get a little cautious with that, since this is based on countywide. I mean, as you know, some of the data I've seen recently doesn't take into account for a size of, to take into consideration. You know, if you have a 5,000 population, you've got 10. And we're 20,000, we got 10, well then we've got a lot less. So I think it's proportional in that this way to address that. You know, what are these bicycle pods over there by the library, what we had in there? Or it's covered, keeps it out of the rain at least, and it's secure. Has that been explored? Is it, I mean, we have that type of option available. Anyways, it's a sad thing out there. Think the Vine Trail there by Methodist Park is about 10-foot wide there on that range. So having walked that one several times, I think it's a good combination. And I'm happy to be able to make that connection between the hotel and Canyon Plaza. I mean, there's amenities there that our guests could enjoy, and there's a couple of restaurants, et cetera. So that's a good thing. All right, are we ready to open it up for public comment? Seeing no objection, public comment is open. So we have some representatives from the developer in the audience and other persons as well, I'm sure.
I have no hands raised at this time.
Oh, okay. There's Al has a hand up.
I just want to make a quick comment, just good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Your volume's kind of low, sir.
It's low, so let's see.
Be close to the mic, I think.
Can you hear me now better?
That is a little better, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al Shigagi from AMS Associate. I would like to thanks Mr. He, Mr. Cooper, and city staffs who worked with us during the past year. Our developer, Mr. Patel, and our team very excited to bring the Hampton Hotel to City of American Canyon. With that, all of us, we are here, our teams are here to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another speaker?
I have no hands raised.
Teresa, I have a quick question. Do you see two more persons?
Yeah, I have, I'm not able to bring them over. James, James is able to speak. He's, he shows up on the panel, but he's not actually on there, but he can speak. I have a Vice Paul Patel, and I am unable to bring him over. And I believe we had the same issue last time. I get an error message because he's using the older version of Zoom. So unfortunately, I can't even give him the permission to talk. So.
The two I was looking for is Ms. Sui Lee, T S U I, and Mary B. They're the consultants for First Carbon, in case you see.
I do have Ms. Lee, I can. Okay. Okay, I think she's over. Yep, she should be in. I don't see Mary.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no further discussion from either developer, the public, or council, I'm going to make a motion.
Let me just make sure we got the folks on board, appreciate that, Councilmember. Ms. Lee, did you have a comment? We'll move forward. But I will do it this time, there's no other, there's a public comment on this matter. I will close public comment, we'll return to council for further discussion, as I action. Councilmember Oral, you want to make a motion?
Sure, again.
Is it a resolution?
Dramatic pause to make sure that nobody else has anything to say. I'm going to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2021, next in order, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, approving an amendment to Broadway District's specific plan, Table 23, to permit lodging as a conditionally permitted use in the local serving mixed-use LSMU zoning district, and adding a special development requirement to number three to require lodging uses in the LSMU zoning district qualify for a three-star or higher Forbes Travel Guide rating, file number PL20-00-0030.
I'll second. Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Obadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
I also have a resolution as well?
I will make a motion to pass resolution number 2021, next in order, a resolution in the City Council of the City of American Canyon, wanting to add an addendum to the Broadway District's specific plan program environmental impact report for the Hampton Inn project, consisting of an amendment to the Broadway District's specific plan, local serving mixed-use zoning district, and conditional use permit for 112 room Hampton Inn Hotel on a 2.53 acre parcel at 3443 Broadway Street, APN 058-312-010. And two, direct stack to file a notice of determination, APN 058-380-008 and 058-320-001, file number PL20-003 and PL20-0029.
I'll second that. Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Obadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, council. See how quickly this is moving forward. I think there's a lot, certainly a lot of deliberation that goes on and a lot of work. And I compliment everybody who's helped, they had a part of this. It's been very good work. Don't see the project moving forward. Moving now outside on our 14th, our business, city workforce demographics. We get a moment for Mr. Hall to get back on board.
Yeah. Teresa, could you bring Jason back? Is he, oh, does he? Looks like he may have come off as a analyst. There he is.
All right.
Okay.
City workforce demographics?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a presentation from your Human Resources Department. I'm actually going to be co-presenting with our Human Resources Officer, Scott Corey. So I think he's going to probably come on screen soon. On his way. There he is.
There you are, all right.
All right, and we do have a presentation this evening. This is Scott Corey, our Human Resources Officer. And so the title of this item is workforce demographics, and we are going to cover that with you. But before we even get into that, I just want to talk a little bit about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so we're reporting on our workforce democracy because it is required by the EEOC that we collect this data annually. And we don't have to report it, but we have to have it available if they ask for it. But also because DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, has become a component of greater effort across the country. And I'll just cite two sources. An article from Gallup, July of 2021, says that US racial justice issues have raised a new sense of urgency to address diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then an article of May 2021 from Forbes says, because of the recent societal spotlight on racial justice and equality, many businesses are taking a renewed interest in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so we're generally in the, what I'd like to call it, know thyself stage in terms of diversity. Because right now in this organization, we're collecting our demographic data. And we're learning about the composition of our workforce as it relates to at least one diversity measurement. And we'll talk a little more about what we hope to accomplish in the coming, you know, months and years as it relates to DEI. And we'll also provide some of the demography for you. But why diversity, equity, and inclusion? To reinforce a little bit on the two quotes from the prior slide. Well, by 2044, groups that are normally seen as minority will reach majority status. So that's, you know, something to consider as we're thinking about our workforce. By 2065, the US population will not have any single ethnic racial majorities. And then in terms of YDEI for American Canyon, for our city, in terms of our workforce. Well, in the credit sector, we know, or we see through research, that diverse companies see higher innovation. Inclusive companies lead to higher work engagement. Diverse teams are better at making decisions. Inclusive company employees report a greater sense of belonging, and the employer reports a greater job performance improvement for its employees. And I do not by any means intend to say that these are the only highlights of benefits of diversity, equity, and inclusion that we're facing as a country, let alone as a region. But I thought that these were meaningful pieces as it relates to what's happening in the future in our area and in our country, and some of the benefits that I think could just highlight benefit to the city. So right now, as I said earlier, we're in our early stages. We've collected some demography information about our workforce. Our Human Resources staff has engaged in some training on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there's been some operational measures that have already been implemented. We're just at the beginning stages. And one of the things to note too is that it's diversity, equity, and inclusion, while not necessarily outlined, called out as such in our summer practices, I think it is very much present in American Canyon. We just have an opportunity to just continue improving. We are always interested in attracting and retaining diverse employees. And we want to continue to develop training and establish an organizational culture that supports diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so at this point, I'm going to hand this off to Scott. He's going to cover some of the policy and framework that supports our organization currently in our current status and how we run, and also the demographic information. And I'll have some closing comments at the end.
Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our demography of our employees with the council. As was mentioned, we do have a legal and policy framework that exists already. It's been around for many years. Of course, we have our federal and state laws that prohibit discrimination against any protected classes. And during the housing presentation earlier, the full list of those were presented, which was very helpful at that point. It's a similar list for the employment issues. The federal EEOC requires that all employers maintain the demographic information. The city's vision, which is adopted by the City Council, pursues and engage in diverse community. Our values that we have as an organization include excellence, transparency, accountability, and integrity. And part of that integrity piece is built into our Code of Ethics, which are part of our HR manual, which describes pursuing recruitment activities without creating unnecessary barriers to public service. So as we began sort of the know thyself approach to this and began to define where we are, we took a snapshot essentially of what our current workforce demographics are. And in May of 2021, we did a survey of our employees, asking them to self-identify how they identify themselves racially or ethnically, so we could have that initial baseline information. Human Resources staff has begun to take part in some early-stage diversity, equity, and inclusion education and training, just to make sure we're understanding fully what exactly is being discussed and how we can implement various measures. And so we're all basically on the same page and beginning to identify best practices that other communities may have already in place we might be able to emulate. And we reviewed our existing procedures and policies and processes to see if there was essentially low-hanging fruit, things that we could improve right away and or begin to work on that would help support. Things that we could improve right away and or begin to work on that would help support better outcomes in DEI. So as a starting point, and as a point of comparison, we talked a lot about how diverse the city of American Canyon is. And this slide demonstrates the racial, ethnic identifications of our community. As you can see, the largest group, thirty seven percent identifies as Asian. Of that group, the Filipino population makes up the largest portion of the Asian grouping. If they were set up as a group by themselves, it did. Consist of approximately twenty six percent of the city's population. Just for information, we are using the EEOC-defined major categories as we go through this information. There are sub-groupings as well, and we are using the high-level EEOC reporting information. Hispanic individuals commit to about twenty nine percent of the city's population. Twenty percent identify as white. Seven percent as black or African-American. Six percent as two or more races, and one percent as native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islanders. It's one of the strangest abbreviations out there, so I'd like to highlight what that, what NOBI stands for. So this slide shows the results of our employee survey. We surveyed our full-time employees and asked them to self-identify what racial, ethnic identities they most associated with. Fifty-three percent identified as being white. The next largest group was the two or more racial groups, which is eighteen percent. Hispanic population was about fifteen percent. We had between the native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islanders and the Asian group. A bit of a, may have been unclear as to whether people were identifying themselves, particularly our Filipino employees, into which group they were self-identifying. So there may be a little bit of a bleed over there between those numbers, because that number for the native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders is higher than the overall community. Somewhat significantly. And then one percent of our employees identify as black or African-American. As we look at other ways of identifying diversity in our popular workforce population. We looked at gender identification. And right now, our systems allow for a binary identification as to gender. And maybe something we look forward to in the future as far as being able to document additional identities when it comes to gender. Sixty-one percent of our workforce identify as male, and thirty-nine percent as female. In the community overall, according to the census, it's split fifty-fifty between men and women, according to the latest census numbers. Age is another area of diversity to consider when talking about our employees. Overall, our employees average just under forty-four years old. It's worth noting that the retirement age for full retirement under classic calpers is fifty-five. And many of our employees, particularly recently, have been taking advantage of that retire, retirement and have been retiring, have been leaving. Men are slightly older than women as an overall group. And you'll notice that the largest groups of our employees are in their forties or fifties. With the numbers of retirements, it was interesting to look at the tenure of our employees. You'll notice that the average tenure of our employees is just under eight years. The largest single grouping have been employees who have been with us for under five years or less. Which is not surprising given the amount of turnover we've had largely due to retirements. You would note that when you compare the tenure number with the age number, which is the slide preceding, and I'll go back up to refresh you on that. We're not seeing a large increase in the number of twenty-year-olds that we're hiring to replace retiring employees. Which would seem to indicate that we're having a relatively good success. Good success in recruiting experienced employees. People who are perhaps a little older, have a little more mid-career to fill those spots. Which is a very positive indicator showing that we're not losing skills and capabilities as we're replacing staff members. One of the ways where you might consider. Improving the racial makeup of our workforce as it compares to the overall community. So if you have an ideal saying, okay, ideally, the workforce that serves a community would have a very similar racial, ethnic makeup. That would be sort of an ideal sort of scenario. And if you think that one way of improving that may be if you hire more people that live in American Canyon. Because if you hire more people in American Canyon, likely they're going to look and resemble the diversity that exists in the community. So in looking at our payroll records, we identified the counties of residence of all of our employees. The majority of our employees, some eighty-five percent, live in either Napa or Solano counties. The largest group lives in Napa County. Overall, we have forty-four percent of our employees who live in American Canyon already. A good number of the employees that are listed in Solano County live in Vallejo, which is, which is obviously very close to the city bordering it. So from a perspective of where our employees live, we seem to be doing a very good job of hiring folks that are local. We get a lot of response when people are coming to, for recruitments, that they want to reduce their commutes. They want to live closer to home, they want to be more available to their children and families, that sort of thing. And we also have requirements amongst many of our employees that do emergency response or standby to respond within a certain amount of time. So it makes sense that we're seeing a lot of employees that live close to the city. So I mentioned earlier that we had taken, we had reviewed some of our processes and measures in HR and began to make some changes. As we became, increased our sensitivity and focus on DEI and related issues. Sort of thinking about what could we do to help make it easier to attract more employees that are diverse? Or at least remove the barriers. Recall that part of our code of ethics was to remove barriers to public service that were unnecessary. So as we did that, we looked at all of our recruitment materials and really focused on the knowledge, skills, and abilities needed to do the jump out. The knowledge, skills, and abilities are defined in the job classifications for each job. And it also includes in their typical education and certifications. So we reviewed all of our materials to make sure we were really focusing on what we call the KSAs, the knowledge, skills, and abilities. Instead of necessarily a certain degree or my more traditional path toward it, toward a career development. We enhanced the use of supplemental questions on our job applications. The job applications allow us to ask questions of applicants. And one of the questions we've been asking them is, how did you obtain the knowledge, skills, or abilities that, you know, are necessary for this job? Some of the positions, particularly like maintenance worker, for example. Some of the folks that were coming to be maintenance workers may not have from just their employment history. A real obvious information about how they came to develop the knowledge, skills, and abilities they had that would make them successful in that job. Some of them may have worked, for example, in the family or with other scenarios that weren't really paid positions. But they were, became highly skilled in things that were necessary or helpful for maintenance workers. So we asked that question to try to elicit that information. And on our last recruitment for maintenance workers, quite a number provided information on there that was very helpful for us in evaluating their applications. We examined our methods of advertising our positions. And looked for ways to reach out to job boards that focused on diverse job applicants. And making sure we were getting out beyond just CalOps.org is our main recruiting tool. So we post all of our jobs on Indeed.com as well to reach a broader audience. We also have partnered with our communications team to coordinate our outreach efforts to make sure that we're advertising all of our job openings through our existing channels we have for the community. Whether that be the city manager's weekly update, our social media, all the avenues we have, utility bills, that sort of thing, to get that information out to reach as many people as possible. We reviewed our examination process for applicants. So when a person applies, they apply for the job, we screen them for minimum qualifications, and then we put them through an exam process. Typically, the exam process includes an oral board. So we were looking at this testing method to make sure that what we were testing actually matched the KSA's necessary for the job. Maintenance workers is another great example. It's not always super helpful to put a maintenance worker through an oral board exam, making them dress up in their suit or whatever the nicest clothes they have to come down to city hall and talk to a bunch of people about maintenance stuff. So we tried to put together a program where we focused on the skills test. And we were able to put twenty-five people through a skills test in one day and to help us evaluate them as far as their overall capabilities when it came to be in the maintenance work. When it comes to oral boards, we focus and make sure we have diversity on our oral boards. That it really reflects a broad range of individuals to examine or help us give input on our applicants. When we did our Code Enforcement Officer recruitment recently. We had an oral board of two women of color, were our oral board. And we had the six or seven applicants that went before them, all were people, all were people of color. And it was divided almost equally between men and women as far as the applicants. That was a very good example of a very diverse recruitment outcome and through our oral board there. We're focusing on digitizing all of our onboarding materials to help get those out. We had been either mailing them by paper and having people return them, or emailing out PDFs and requiring people to fill them out and oftentimes scan them back to us. Those are all potential barriers if people don't have the technology at home to scan documents back up or print them out. So we have been using laser fish forms and other methods to try to make those more accessible to more people and to our applicants. And we're also included an opportunity to post many of those documents onto the website and are directing people there so they can download them or access them there. Fill them out and return them to us and make that a simpler, more effective, and hopefully remove the barriers there. We've updated our new employee checklist and to standardize that and get that out to the departments. Also begun to standardize between all of our employees, full and part-time, the onboarding welcoming information that we provide them. So they all get the same message about the city and what it means to work for the city of American Canyon. As part of that welcoming and onboarding process, we're including a demographic form, basically a similar racial and ethnic identity form for all of our incoming employees. So we're able to maintain the information we have. And hopefully, as we move forward, be able to produce an annual statistical record that is comparable from year to year. So we can begin to see progress as we move forward in our diversity efforts. And I think that concludes my portion. Brad, do you want to take this?
Yes, thanks Scott. So some of the next things that we'll be working on as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion recruitment efforts and bringing the organization along. We still want to continue analyzing some of our data. As I said, we just have the first step here, which is understanding where we are currently, knowing ourselves, and getting a demographic report of our employee status. We can sort this status still by bargaining group, by date of hire, by work location, job type, and also see how we're comparing to neighboring municipalities. There are a lot of other options too that we can take advantage of relating to how to measure ourselves, even just organization size, whether public or private. We do want to take advantage of utilizing outside experts to develop training for DEI topics for all of our employees. DEI is definitely part of building an organizational culture, a philosophy, a way of behaving, a way of thinking. And that comes with training and raised awareness. We want employees to experience a change in their opinion in terms of raised awareness. And we do want to continue to review and modify and improve in any way our hiring practices. I know Scott just covered quite a few of the things we've done in the short time that we've rebuilt the, the HR department really the last two years. And we also want to maybe explore joining, you know, other alliance groups, for example, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity is a government series of networks where you become a member. You can learn about other DEI initiatives that are taking place across the country. You know, share ideas and things like that. So there's, there's a few things we want to, we want to do in the near future. This is just highlights some of them. If you could go to the next slide, Scott. So I wanted to make sure we got to see this slide one more time. I know we see it in our community quite a bit, and you know, we, we do our heart symbol, right? But part of the reason that this is important is because we've, I think we've covered what I, what I believe is a really big topic across the country. But the common thread here is that we are working on efforts towards diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I, I hope that tonight you can see just a brief summary of what we're doing internally in the organization. But also as a reminder that we're continuing to support the meaning of the graphic, which is, you know, throughout our community in all sorts of different places, right? And so we just want to continue to embrace that philosophy that we love everyone. And so with that, I just want to conclude and see if you have any questions or comments of Scott or myself.
Thank you for the presentation. Speaks a lot about American Canyon and who we are. I was a graduate of the GEAR program through the county health and services a couple, three years ago. Very, very good content in that. And I think it works more going beyond just recognizing what you're dealing with, so how you engage in that process as well. If you have to pass along contact, if you want to pursue that further.
Thank you.
I think the, I don't know if everyone knows the story behind the leaf heart sign. Sadly, it came out of a Filipino family was hit with a very racist hate email. And how they responded to that, I mean, I, how many? I can count in the hundreds emails I got from all over the United States. I even had the consul from San Francisco at the office here. It's the all, you know, discussing matter, the press, Filipino press. The response from us was, well, we can identify the perpetrator, we don't know who it is, but we can make a statement about who we are in American Canyon. And that's how that sign got developed. And still is today, sure we can make copies for people who want them. But the understanding one is, you can stick them in your window in your yard and they can stay there forever, because it's just to make that type of monument. I appreciate the work we're doing here. The demographics are changing as you can predict in the future. Go to the school campus of American Canyon, as you can see, very actively, house changing, as large as children of heart. And that speaks to who American Canyon is. I think people move here because there's a sense of, more than extensive, but neighborliness. I was talking with somebody the other day. What a silver topic about this. Do you, my, my point of interest always is, you know, the good point about having thirty-eight What a silver topic about this. Do you mind? My point of interest always is, you know, the good point about having 38 different languages spoken in American Canyon as diverse as it is. Favorite home recipes. Well, I knew neighbors next to our Vietnamese. We have fog. Cross streets, Thai food. Next to that, our house is Filipino. Sometimes we sit. Because it's a merging of two cultures and a cuisine down the road is Mexican cuisine at the end of the cul-de-sac. Is there? Bio, there's segregation in American Canyon. No, it goes like this. If you can afford the payment on the house or the rent, you live there. And that's how diverse American Canyon is. I think that's just, there's a value system that goes way back to. Long before, I think the city was incorporated. There was just a place that welcomed the. Families to come here and. We build neighbor, neighbor to neighbor type of relationships that are very strong. And I think it's something we can work on. And certainly with our city demographics. There's opportunity there too. I would like to know more on the outreach. How do you inspire a young person to look for employment? In a career path in the city of American Canyon. There's many opportunities here. I think. The, I've attended many times career affairs at the high school. Good opportunity there. I know one of them like regular credit union does a finance thing they do. I understand finance as well. I think maybe there's more we can do here as a city to stay here. Here's an opportunity for a lifetime's work. Doing career paths. With that, I don't know who was first, Councilor Washington, Councilor Joseph, Vice Mayor Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Scott and Maria for, for the presentation. I can't say that the diversity, you know, of equity and inclusion was definitely at the forefront of my. Purpose for even wanting to run for city council. And so I'm glad that you identified and even become transparent and ensuring where we were. And I just want to say for those who are out there looking at the stats that were read off today, those were stats that were given earlier. There's, there's already been improvement within the city of identifying and addressing. Diversity. So hats off to you, Scott, and what you've done just in this one, one year that I've been in. In office. So, so, so thank you. It is, it is important and, and, and we are setting some. Innovative way, innovative ways of addressing it. So. First part is getting over the denial of where we are and where we need to be. So again, with that, I just say hats off. Thank you. And, and the work is just beginning. And so we should be able to see more people that look like, like how this council looks right now, you know, so. And then students being able to see people that look like them and then know that there's opportunities out there. So thank you again.
And Joseph. Well, I would echo Councilmember Washington's comments. I, you know, as a data. You know, junkie or whatever, I appreciate all the data and the statistics. Particularly pleased at the 44% of the workforce that actually live in town. It's much more than I thought and very happy about that. You know, clearly, you know, the, the gender, the ethnicity is, is the big. You know, standout that, that our workforce is a lot wider than our community is. So I think that becomes probably a, an objective for us to be looking down the road. How can we? Move that, get those two numbers in better alignment. In that regard, you know, because there was such a large. Subset of new hires, it, it might be worthwhile to examine that subset and break it out and say, okay. What was the ethnicity, age, gender and so forth of just that subset? Because that'll kind of give us an indication of, you know, whether we're getting better or not without having to wait over top. The, the only other suggestion I'd like to make is I mentioned to the city manager. If we could look at the job titles and lump them into, I think they're the employee categories of management, professional, technical, administrative, maintenance. I kind of EEOC classification. Just so that we can sort it from that perspective as well. And then lastly, even though there may be some confidentiality or privacy issues. To, to plug into it somehow, you know, our recruitments, you know, if we recruit 100 applicants, what do they look like? So you can compare how well your outreach outreach is as well as how well they end up getting into the, the system. Promotions, disciplinary actions and departures. Again, you know, if, if the numbers are so small, that may not be something you could publicly share. We were not interested in exposing who's, who's up to what, but to have that internally so that. Again, we can monitor how well we're responding in terms of those kind of numbers. So again, really impressed with the data and the efforts. Really liked some of the ideas that have been highlighted as far as. How to translate that into your, your operations. Very, very happy. Thank you for getting this to us. Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, one, one other category I would like the city to consider are, are veterans. How many veterans do we, do we bring on board? To me, that's a real important statistic to kind of show how we support our troops.
Any training I went to earlier, it's on the. How do you do with redistricting? So they do a whole population analysis and it's more of a graphic visual picture. Those are kind of what captured my attention more throughout the whole county. And each, in each jurisdiction, so mapping minority communities and mapping Hispanic and Asian. And there's, where there's an area where people live, there's this, it's a circle. Size of the circle represents a number proportionally. And they. Mark two ways, black is tone number, gray is voting age. And you move through the city of Napa, for example, it's dispersed all over for us. American Canyon likewise, Asian population is spread out largely over the east side, some of it on the west side. It's just like, there's no place where it's all, everybody is concentrated. So that was to me rather interesting representation of how the demographics looking to come. Further on this side. Council ladies, your public comment? Let's see where we have the public.
I have no hands raised at this point.
Okay, so this is a.
Oh, I do. I have one. I have Beth Marcus. Go ahead, Todd.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I just want to say great job on that. I'm proud to see that we're having more and more people live in our community. And I'd like to comment about the board, our, our, our city council. I mean. You are diverse. Every one of you are fantastic. I love all of you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Family one life and others there, like us, it's a vibrational marriage. And they're young kids back when we first met. And we're new here. It says, well, what, what brought you to American Canyon? Oh, well, you know, the house is affordable. But we realized it wasn't going to be a problem for our children or us. Knowing who the community is. I said, you know, that speaks a lot to American Canyon, our values. Thank you. Thank you for the report. I do appreciate all the work we're doing to it. And I'm sure it's going to be a valuable tool for us to use in. Creating, meeting other goals and objectives. So thank you. All right. That being said, we're on to staff management oral reports. Mr. Hobbie.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A couple of reports tonight. Chief Greenberg, Rick Greenberg has an introduction he'd like to make. Maybe we'll start there. Also, Public Works Director Smithies and Maintenance Utility Directors Hernandez also have a couple of updates. But we'll start first with Greg. In that way.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to take a moment to make an announcement, a promotional announcement. Our current community outreach officer, Natalie Tato, who joined us back in July when I took over as chief. Has recently promoted to sergeant. So big congratulations to her. She'll be sitting in American Canyon. Which is awesome. And she'll be taking over a graveyard shift on December 12th. So I just wanted to take a moment and let Natalie reintroduce herself and talk a little about it.
Well, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So I know I started down here about six, seven months ago, like Chief said. Been great being the community resource officer, but now I get to take on a new role as sergeant. So I'm really excited to stay down here in American Canyon to do that. I've been with the sheriff's office since 2010. I actually started my career in American Canyon. I worked down here as a patrol officer for about three years before moving to investigations. I worked child abuse crimes for seven years and then returned to patrol where I've been. Doing patrol and doing community assignments since then. So I'm just really excited to be back. Where I started my career 11 years ago. So I'm very excited and thank you for having me.
And to have you on board with us and say some work you do out there.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next we have Director Smithies.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just wanted to share that. The collaboration between Public Works and Communications, we now are starting to have our big construction projects available on the website for transparency. So if you go over to Public Works on the city website and under construction project. You'll see that we now have a link for the Green Island Road Project and the Dillon Road Project. And we'll soon have a link for the Waffen Ranch Development. So we'll try to provide periodic updates. To let you know the status and where we are schedules and we'll add projects as we progress. Just wanted to share that. And Commissioner Wong, as the resident, already shared with you that we have the class one details now on the Wetlands Edge Trail. And Eucalyptus Drive, short segment of the Bay Ridge Trail. We plan to have etiquette signs at the Mallory app will be up this week for both trails. And we'll add on as we go with other locations in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Also, Director Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So for a year now, the city's been participating voluntarily participating in COVID-19 wastewater surveillance sampling. We have partnered with Stanford University, UC Berkeley, as well as others. And on November 10th, the California Bar Quality Monitoring Council did recognize those efforts. And approved a resolution. We are one of 32 utilities that have participated. And hit our mind that is free to impart this, this resolution. The California Bar Quality Monitoring Council formally recognizes and extends its profound appreciation for the efforts. For the utilities below to develop and implement wastewater monitoring that informs responses to COVID-19 pandemic and protects the health of Californians. Utilities that were early trend setters in implementing wastewater based epidemiology. Prior to the formal development of state federal programs, you have maintained sampling for more than a year. Further to that, that was on November 10th and today on the 16th. The State Water Resources Control Board also recognized those efforts. Where the State Water Resources Control Board formally recognizes and extends its profound appreciation. For the voluntary efforts and expenditures before mentioned utilities have contributed to the development. And implementation of wastewater monitoring and form responses to COVID-19 pandemic that the health of Californians. I want to thank, to exalt you to thank the maintenance utility staff, especially Pam Phillips. Phillips, she did a phenomenal job on leading these efforts and coordinating everything through Stanford and UC Berkeley. So a huge thank you to Pam. And I believe it's, it's really. Just a testament to, to what we have accomplished to lead the city in this realm of this COVID-19 pandemic. My next update is just to announce that Rick Hall Jr. has obtained a certified playground safety inspector. Through the National Recreation and Parks Association. So congratulations to Rick Hall Jr. for the minute certification. That's all I have.
Thanks, Felix.
Congratulations, everybody.
That's all the updates we have, Mayor. I'll just note, we have a couple of meetings in December and the anticipated future items for Council are listed in the agenda. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Going on to Mayor Council comments and then future agenda item, I think. That's where just initially one for future agenda item for my council reports. Anything further to add, Vice Mayor, to yours?
Nothing to add to my reports, but yes, I'll be asking to add an item.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get to that. All right. Councilmember Oral, anything else yours?
No, nothing to add. Finish off, read it. It's ready.
All right. Councilmember Abadamos. Anything to report? Here on you. Okay, well, we want to. Come back to that. Councilmember Washington.
I have nothing additional to report. I actually got my report in late.
Okay. Well, mine will catch up too. I'd just like to, big shout out to American Canyon High School Band. They hosted the Napman Valley Band Reserve in Memorial Stadium in Napa. And 21 bands from all over the Bay Area, some from out in the valley. Came in and performed. It's, it's an opportunity to go to one of those there. It's very choreographed band marching and the, the. Death strips there with the flags and like that. It's just very smart and choreographed. So I was invited to do the, because at the mayor's trophy, it was the assistance of Vice Mayor Leslie Seale from Napa. And the stadium was packed. It was just a lot of high energy. It's just great to see. Also today we had the, the co-ed group. That's really organizations assisting disasters. We have the Children's Health Initiative. That's a group here to study vaccines. And they've done a very successful project with getting vaccinations out to the younger age groups. In Napa, they've been down here in American Canyon a couple of times and that's a huge success with that. I know the clinic here about a week ago at the high school. Got my booster. Thank you. My arm's okay now. But over 300 people showed up for that one. So we're achieving our goal with, and that was for. Booster shots, Moderna, Pfizer. Second or third, second, original second of either those. And they also had flu shots. So they're really ramping up the county public health system, trying to get everybody vaccinated. Had an incident on the highway. It was very inconvenient, to say the least. Car crashed into a power pole over here by the Adobe lumber. Traffic was shut down. I was setting a memorial service for a friend and got. Called in by a cert to go out and help the traffic. So I'm there at Allison Way and. James Road, trying to assist two other people. You know, it really points out the, the need to have utility poles under, undergrounded along that highway. It's just. It was a nightmare for a while and I appreciate all the staff and. Our police force for being out there as well, trying to deal with this situation. Understand it was a no fatality accident, but. The thing that was holding up the pole apparently was a car that crashed into it. So I'm telling you, got a truck out there to take care of it. It was just. Very little evidence of what happens when things go wrong. So I appreciate everybody's work and I'm working on that. And that would. That would conclude my report. All right. So now on the future agenda items. Vice Mayor Joseph, do you have that?
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned earlier. I would like to bring back the proclamation on climate change, converting it into a resolution. And then more specifically to essentially delete the fourth section. And replace it with language similar to that the council would establish an ad hoc committee. Working with staff and local stakeholders to develop and implement. to develop an implementation plan to achieve the goals set forth in the resolution. So, and frankly, I know that, well, my sense would be, you know, it doesn't take very long to edit that document. And I'd like to see it back on the next agenda so that we don't waste any more time. And so, my request would be that we modify it to a resolution, add the additional language and bring it back on the next council.
A question about that. Just, you know, I think there's been a lot of discussion, proclamations and public comment on that, but we haven't. And I know you sit on the Climate Action Committee Council, but I don't know if the council has gotten, you know, formulated as a body our position outside of these proclamations and public comment. I would love to have a little bit more discussion about exactly what we can meet and need versus just sort of like abstract things. Like, you know, I don't know, honestly, right now, it's like, you know, carbon neutral by 2030. Okay, fine, what are we going to do? I sense an opportunity to do things and I would like to have that discussion before we come back with a proclamation. Like, for instance, bikes, right? Why, why isn't a city that is, you know, dominated by cars moving more quickly to have bike lanes, green lanes, widening this, implementing our bike implementation plan? That is something that isn't necessarily going to be covered in this sort of resolution or direction from the city council. And I think we owe ourselves to have that discussion, right? Because I would like to see that happen, right?
I agree with you. I would like to look for specifics. How do you translate these, these more global concepts into something practical? That makes it all, so, you know. I think that for me would have a lot more meaning. And I think, I think understanding where you're coming from, Councilmember Oral, it's the same thing, I think. What specific things can we do to?
Right. And I don't disagree with any of that and would certainly welcome a dialogue. My point was, we need a resolution that, that does that, that essentially adds an implementation plan component. And, you know, certainly, you know, we don't necessarily need to immediately create a subcommittee and then nobody hears about it for six weeks or months. So, either way, the bottom line for me is it should be a revolution and there should be a provision that essentially directs us to put together an implementation plan. Because otherwise, you basically have, you know, flowery language that says, this is a big problem and we ought to do something about it. And if you don't, if you don't define how you get there from here, you've essentially done that. So, to Councilmember Oral's point, yeah, we should talk about bike usage. How does that fit in? Electrifying the fleet, converting as much fossil fuel into renewables, et cetera, et cetera. All of those things need to be identified with some milestones and some deadlines. And again, working with the stakeholders that are out there as well as with staff. That, that's the other difference. Asking staff to do all this heavy lifting is unrealistic. But we have community organizations out there, the students as well as Napa Climate Now, that have very much smarter people than us.
Really, that's, that's.
There's, they have actually done this.
So.
Bar all coffee.
Exactly, exactly. So, the point of it all is, we need to get focused on an implementation plan. And what the proclamation said tonight, basically, you know, I hate using Greta Thunberg's comment, but essentially, it's blah, blah, blah. We need a, we need an action plan. How we get there is, is worth a discussion. But there's got to be a provision that says, here's how we're going to make it happen.
So, does a resolution accomplish that? What is a resolution going to accomplish? So, like, that's a question, and I still want to continue a comment. I feel like we are also taking actions as a council already that are more impactful. Like, before us, probably in December, we were probably the opportunity to pause all gas stations. We've done everything that we can to get the city council, not the city, but the city on clean energy with solar and NG. We have 15 EV charging stations coming in with the Hampton and the Suites and we're exerting effort to do that. Why can't we just continue to take actual actions rather than creating a resolution? A resolution with teeth, how about that? Versus just saying that we need to do this? I, I'm trying to understand that part.
Okay. Principally because if we, you're right. At one level, simply adopting a resolution that says we're going to have an action plan doesn't mean anything unless you actually have somebody putting together an action plan. And that action plan's got to be specific with tangible dates and who's assigned. So, your point's well taken. My counter to that is, absent that kind of transaction, coupled with working with stakeholders and staff, absent that, in six months, we're going to say, hey, we adopted a general plan amendment that had great programs and objectives. Who's going to do it and when are they going to do it? And how are we going to track it? We don't have any of that stuff built into the system. So, I guess where I'm coming from is, you know, for two years now, the Climate Action Committee's been going through its motions and it's moving at a snail's pace. We have some, you know, we know that the dire consequences are here. It's simply frustrating to me that we're acting as if everything's okay because we're doing something here or doing something there, but we don't have a game plan with deadlines and accountability. And that's what's missing.
Well, that's what we talked about with the strategic plan was the probability we're going to. Yeah. That goes back to my question. What does the resolution do that the proclamation didn't do tonight?
You want it to get into technicalities. A proclamation is aspirational, a resolution is directed. If push came to shove, a proclamation would do the trick, but that proclamation doesn't, doesn't direct us to do anything other than in very general terms, to work with people and pass a general, a general plan amendment that in turn won't necessarily mean anything unless you have a specific action plan with dates, times and tasks. So, yes, a resolution's more appropriate, but a good proclamation might have done the same trick. We didn't have either. That's what I'm asking for.
But, but, but would you agree that we are taking steps to be a more environmentally friendly, leading city?
Sure. And, you know, but if we don't track our progress, how do we know we've done as good as we should do? You know, we should be tracking how many solar installations there's been approved, how many EV charging stations, you know, how many, you know, are we converting our fleet to an electric fleet? When are we going to get it done? We adopted a program saying that the Enterprise rentals will do it, but do we have anything that says in year one, we're going to flood this many and in year two, that many and so forth? Those are the types of manageable, measurable objectives that need to be established so that we can hold everyone accountable for results. We don't have that now. Or if we do, it's not being shared.
And, and, and so, just again, so, do you want that, all of that in the proclamation? Or the, I mean, resolution?
No, I was limited just to, in my case, saying, let's add, create an ad hoc committee, a council committee to work with staff and stakeholders to come back with that kind of detail. It shouldn't be in the resolution. So, all I was saying is, you need a provision that says, this is how we're going to implement the goal or achieve it through an action, through a committee that will meet with stakeholders and the, and staff and craft a detailed action plan.
And but you want that for the city? Because we already have one for the countywide version of that, correct? We already have a countywide climate action committee.
Yeah. So, this would be an ad hoc council committee or it could be, you know, the full council. Either way, I just figured it may make more sense to assign it to a subcommittee to, to go through the minutia of it all. But, you know, it's up to the full council in that regard.
So, what, what you're proposing is something that's very similar to our strategic plan? Yep, you know, it's timelines, what's going to?
Yeah, yeah. If it comes to mechanics, yes, there would be, you know, timelines, who's assigned, what was the outcomes?
I was just saying, this is very similar to our strategic plan. How are we doing on that? So, yeah, I'm thinking, you know, we're, they're a great idea, Councilmember. But are we ready to execute on it? And we have pulled that for years and years and years.
Yeah, well, my goal would be to be more specific. Yeah, you're right. Because if, again, we, we have to realize that we aren't going to get anything done unless we define it in specific terms, assign somebody and have a deadline. And then, you're right, we've got to keep on top of it and hold, hold staff accountable as necessary.
I'd be willing to work with you on that there, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I think you both serve on the council committee now, right?
Yeah, we would be the logical candidates anyway.
Yeah, yes, you would. Well, I'm, I'm very cautious about it. Because like I say, you know, we, we have these strategic plan over the years. It's at the same emphasis. It's important we need to do it, we hold ourselves accountable and then we don't fall as effectively as we should. So, I think energy, that's, that's very simple. And I think, I think further discussion on that might be notorious, but sometimes it's just discussion that goes, doesn't get us where we want to be.
I certainly would agree with.
I think frankly, to where we add as a total of what we've accomplished in the city with respect to climate change, we've done quite a lot. And a lot of it is due to the fact we're building a lot of new housing stock, which, you know, we incorporate that into it. Just, now down here, maybe if you didn't see it, water conservation efforts we've done? That was North Bay Watership Association. And people were, wow, you're doing what? How do I get information? You know, there's, there's another example. All the, all the recycled water that's delivered to your house free.
Yeah.
Those are all, I'm happy to take advantage of that and tell all my neighbors and we've gotten more people in our area using, of course, you know, reading weather is here. There's something to be said just by identifying something that helps. One to follow up on, what are we doing about recyclables? Is that a climate improvement thing?
It's, it's related, certainly.
Yeah, right, yeah. Green Island, oh, the plastic waste that comes out of those, something like 600 pounds out of one of the wineries there? Because it's all the wrapping and the product they receive? Gration on somebody who's in that, collecting it? Well, should we map that? Shouldn't we get more of that going? Yeah, we should, sure. That's a household level, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree that it should be a comprehensive approach. And, and my point would be that we need to engage some of the stakeholders in the community that can help us craft strategies that will get us there.
I agree.
I'm not suggesting we haven't done anything. I know I am prone to grumble about, about getting anything done. But yes, we've made progress. But if we're going to try to make a, you know, a fair shot at trying to achieve carbon free by 2030, we're going to have to have some pretty audacious plans and strategies of how to get there. So, and it isn't going to happen unless we engage the stakeholders in the community that can help us get there, along with staff. Because I suspect their role will be to say, hey, if you're going to ask me to accomplish this, how are you going to get me there? So, I do think the interplay is essential. And like I said, I think certainly the members of the community that spoke earlier would like to see something more specific. And that's why I'm bringing it forward.
I appreciate you, you responding to that interest of the community, yeah.
One of the things I might suggest, Mayor, it sounds like our two Climate Action Committee appointees already have an interest in looking at this. Maybe they, the council can charge them with, with meeting with these stakeholders and trying to develop a resolution. I don't think we need a resolution that says how the climate people, climate appointees go meet with stakeholders. I think the council can, you know, put that under the broad authority. Engaging at the CAC is not a lot different than engaging with stakeholders. I mean, you're, you're already sort of in that representative role. So, if the, if the council felt like, yeah, sure, we, we like Mark and Pierre to engage with some of the stakeholders heard tonight and, and some other stakeholders and talk about what a resolution would be, if it would make sense for American Canyon. Being a little realistic about December 7th, that's a chock full agenda with fuel station moratoriums, historic building codes, leisure tea and draft tournament ordinance. Hopefully, we can get through all that stuff that happened. It's a full agenda. And December 21 also has a number of items on it. So, it's, it's a full agenda, but, you know, there's, if, if that group wanted to do some of that work and bring back a resolution, I, I don't, I don't think we need the formality of, Pierre and Mark have already been assigned in this general category at the county.
I see, like, yeah, I get where you're, you're going with that. No, I agree. I'm just saying, knowing Climate Action Committee meets with other groups, right? So, what's their product coming for? Yeah. And I would be supportive of that, you know. I, I get the urgency of this, you know, particularly coming out of, you know, COP26 Environmental Conference that happens and the deadline in 2020. It's 2022 and in six weeks, we've got eight years, you know. But given that we have on our agenda, I mean, we'll probably pump this to January and still show it, totally supportive of it.
Yeah.
Still want to have a discussion about it. I just don't want to stress staff out or us having to stand till midnight for the next two meetings.
Well, and, and I do agree with the manager's suggestion. And I think it's something that Councilmember Washington and I can kind of take, kind of the initiative from tonight's discussion and reach out to some of those stakeholders and say, okay, let's start developing something so that when we do come back, there's more meat to it than just, you know, we turn it into a resolution instead of a proclamation.
Well, I suppose part of that product would be what we, what have we already seen?
Sure. And I do think an inventory of our accomplishments needs to be, you know, part of that package as well as, you know, low hanging fruit, frankly, you know, as well as things that will take eight years to accomplish. So, I, I do think that's a good suggestion. And we can reach out to some of those, you know, stakeholders, some of whom are still listening in and, you know, and, you know, go from there and come back, report back and then, you know, as a council member comments, if nothing else, and then hopefully, early next year, formalize it.
And the only thing I would add to that is I'm aware that the, that the CAC is embarking now on an inventory of greenhouse gas emissions countywide. And so, some of the ideas and the resolutions, I think, may correlate to that study or be informed either by that study or will relate to it. So, I, I think there should be some awareness of that and some correlation with that.
Right. That's a good point. I mean, that will give us a good baseline, you know, of, of starting probably next year. So, we'll have an understanding, this is where we're at. And if we do those inventories on a more frequent basis, we can monitor our progress globally as well as with specific actions. So, thank you. That's a very good suggestion.
I did. Anything else, anything else on future dead items? Did not? Well, appreciate some stuff. I look forward to having something come back to us from the, what you're proposing there. Councilmember.
Looking forward to it.
And Councilmember Washington. Well, if there's nothing further, then we have concluded our business for the evening. We urge you, thanks for all.
Good night, Eric.
Good night.